This meeting will come to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Deputy Hellstrom, and then remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, this is our moment of silence, please. Board members, will you please record your attendance? Brian, do you have what you need? Thank you. All right, we're moving to our next, the next item on our agenda. This is, but before I, before I get to public comment, let me read just a little bit about this meeting. We're having a special called Board Meeting tonight, and the Board shall hold special meetings as necessary to transact business of the Board. Such meetings will be called by the Chair whenever in the Chair's judgment the interest of the schools require it, or it is requested by the majority of the Board. In this case, this meeting met both criteria. The only business related to the call of the meeting is what's on the agenda, the COVID-19 safety protocols. So that's all that will be discussed tonight in this meeting. In terms of public comment, we have 30 minutes of public comment. We have 30 speakers signed up for one minute each. Public comment gives priority to Williamson County residents. All persons must state your name, and also ID yourself if you are speaking for an organization. The Chair has the right to terminate remarks of an individual who is disruptive, or does not adhere to the rules, for example, speaking on the subject at hand. Public comment, again, is one of the several ways the Board can hear from constituents. We hear from constituents through public comment, through email, through phones, and One more thing I want to mention is that, I'm having trouble reading my writing here, that business decorum is expected. There is no shouting or clapping as a person speaks, including while the Board is transacting its business. Disruptive individuals will be asked to leave, and we also ask, we give you a moment to hold up your signs now, and then put your signs down throughout the rest of the meeting. This meeting is livestreamed, and some of the signs are blocking the livestream. Okay, thank you. Please place your signs on the floor. Now moving on to public comment. If you will introduce yourself, again, name the organization you're representing, and then tell us the subject of your remarks. Our Vice Chairman of the Board, Casey Haw, over here, will give you, will let you know when your time is up, and we will cut the mics after one minute. So our first speaker tonight is Kalita Perkins.
To Superintendent Golden and honorable members of the Williamson County Board members, my name is Kalita. I work in the ICU at one of the local hospitals here. I've been in the field for 21 years, working alongside with the COVID patients. You're looking at someone who's exhausted, frustrated, and feeling helpless at this point. We know this Delta variant affects the kids, and it's at an all-time high. Some of these babies can't be vaccinated. Imagine what's going to happen in the next few weeks. Right now, over 120,000 Americans have been infected with COVID in one day, kids included. Our local children's hospital is on diversion right now, and we're just within our first week of school. Yes, no more masks sounds good until it affects your family personally. It's our duty to protect our children, and we don't have time to wait for others to get vaccinated. But what we can do right now is agree that masks will slow the spread. It's our best defense we have to keep some type of normalcy within our community. So let's link arms, protect our children during these unprecedented times while we have the chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shelby Rollins.
Can I ask you a question? Did you think about my eight-year-old daughter when you made masks mandated last year? Because I want to tell you her story. I picked her up on her first day of school last year, and she cried the whole way home, her love for school extinguished because of the lack of connection that she needed. Were you there in my car for months when I had to pry her fingers from the backseat to get her to go inside when she begged me not to, all wire, while her younger brother watched with growing anxiety about how he was about to start kindergarten this year? Were you there when she was shamed by classmates because she had a mask exemption, but they had been indoctrinated by fear and made her feel like her beautiful face was a threat to them? Please stop talking about safety until you are willing to acknowledge how unsafe this was for so many, because where there is risk, there has to be choice.
Our next speaker, our next speaker is Dr. Jim Kefler, I believe. Kefler?
Madam Chair, if I may. Thanks.
Excuse me, doctor, just a moment, please.
No problem.
Can we, please, can you check on the, on the technical? I've just, I got a note that the livestream is not on yet.
If I may, Madam Chair, Mr. Galbraith's microphone was not on. I want to make sure everyone heard that. He said that the livestream is not working. I've gotten confirmation from our Communications Department, it's not working. It is on WCTV, and they are recording it, and our Technology Department is working on trying to make that work. It is working? Oh, they were, I, I get what you're saying.
Dr. Kefler.
Hi, hi, I'm Jim Kefler. I'm a pediatrician working here in Middle Tennessee. We moved here about 15 years ago with our three children, all of whom have gone to Williamson County schools. Last year, our son had to be quarantined three times because of exposures to COVID at school. My wife and I are both public school products. We went to public school all the way through graduate school. And at a practice that I'm at, we see about 4,000, 4,000 to 6,000 children each year, each of us, coming in for sick visits, checkups. And what we've seen in the last year is some kids getting sick with COVID. Most of them do really well, but some of those kids having some long-term issues with their heart. What I have not seen is any kids coming in with, "My asthma's acting up because of, I have to wear a mask at school," or "I have a skin infection because I'm wearing a mask at school."
Please continue.
Thank you. We would love it if there was a way, another way out of this pandemic, but what we have right now is a way to vaccinate our students and our public, and we can wear masks until all that, we can wear masks until all of that happens.
Mister, excuse me, Mr. Haw? Have we reached our minute? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's one minute per person.
Including the cat calls?
I, I paused for a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Excuse me, just a minute, Mr. Haw. Casey, I don't think I heard your notification, so, okay, thank you. Thank you.
I'm just trying to pause it for maybe a minute.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Galbraith?
May we pause until we get the livestream up and going? We've got, I said there's 1,200 people waiting to watch online, and I would, I would prefer that everybody get to see this once in live.
Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
If I may, Mr. McNeese is, has moved to the back to work on livestream. Is there, is there any, any report you can give us?
I know it's happened before, but I can't recall what meeting.
Ms. Berthong, if you would, can you give us information on the livestream?
They're still working on it. I don't have an update for you. We're trying to livestream through the county's channel. It is being broadcast through WCTV, however, so if you're on cable, you can watch it. And it's being recorded.
I've seen reports that Fox 17 happens. Police report that we're friends.
The Mom's Liberty Tennessee Facebook page is off the livestream.
The news outlets are livestreaming. Is that right?
So Fox 17, it is livestreaming.
Channel 5, Fox.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. So if you're, if you're listening and wanting to watch the livestream, you've been given some alternate routes to watch that. So we'll continue. The next speaker is Michael Miller.
Good evening. My name is Mike. Please reinstate a mask mandate and all other protocols used last year. I'm a data analytics with a kidney dialysis company. I'm not representing my company, but have seen the data. COVID has ravaged the fragile community already on dialysis, and has caused severe kidney issues in infected people, including kids. My kids both have IEPs. Last year in WCS Online, neither of them received the level of services accorded by their IEPs. In March, WCS required us to choose online or in-person for this year, stating it would continue to heed CDC guidance. Given this promise of a safe environment that would provide what they're guaranteed under the least restrictive environment clauses of IDEA, we chose in-person school. Kids are guaranteed by law a free and equal access to a safe public education in the least restrictive environment possible. An environment where children are not protected from an airborne disease violates this. We must protect those who are too young, including those in middle school.
Excuse me, audience, I want to clarify that Mr. Haw, or I call time. Mr. Haw, if you can please just verbal, just verbally give the signal. Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is, I believe, Jennifer Kend, Kim?
Hi there, I'm Dr. Jennifer Kerr. I've already personally emailed all of you the unbiased data to make your decision. The Delta variant is, will spread in our schools like wildfire. There is risk to children. We are seeing it already in our country and in our state. Children and family members will die if you do not put mitigation strategies in place. Our pediatric hospitals are already full of RSV and parainfluenza. This is unprecedented in summer months. There will not be staff to care for the children when they get sick, not just from COVID, but even from these other childhood viruses. And our, and our adult ICUs are already reaching capacity. We need masking, physical distancing, cohorting, eating lunch in classrooms. We need it all back. We need it the same as last year.
Dr. Kerr, excuse me, if you'll take a pause for a minute. We're just going to sit in silence for a minute. Mr. Haw, where was she with her time? Dr. Kerr, you have 20 more seconds.
Thank you very much. It is like you are throwing a large chicken pox party with our children, only the stakes are incredibly higher. How can you not prioritize the life of a child? This is unconscionable. Ignoring the guidance of experts from the CDC and AAP to prioritize your politics and believe what you have read on social media has more credence than these organizations or the scores of physicians that are here or watching us online is unconscionable. Please do the right thing. Find the humility.
Time.
And protect our children.
Time. Thank you.
Please reinstate a mask mandate now. Without it, it will be impossible for my youngest to have the best option of in-person school. He has cerebral palsy and is high-risk, but deserves the best education that only you can provide. We moved to Williamson County two years ago for one reason only, the schools. Before we moved, you made an impression, one strong enough to uproot my family for not only your district's academic reputation, but for the emotional, social, physical, and whole-child support you provide. Through my middle son's experience at school, my first impression was reinforced. When COVID hit and the district took adequate precautions and gave online learning options, I was relieved and so appreciative. But now, after abandoning AAP and CDC safety guidelines amid a pandemic surge and no longer have the same impression of Williamson County schools, your reputation is on the line. Will you make it right by protecting our high-risk and unvaccinated children? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jessica Stoltz.
I'm a WCS parent. Please instate a temporary mask mandate and all other protocols you used last year. Michelle, who just asked you to protect her high-risk family, didn't say this. In late 2020, her dad died from COVID. He got it while working, where masks were encouraged, but not required. Many didn't heed the advice. In 13 fast days, he was dead. That's devastating. It will devastate our community every time it happens. Had masking been required, the outcome could likely be different. An evidence review by the Proceedings of the National Academy of Sciences of the USA says, "Widespread mask use reduces community transmission. Masks help people keep germs to themselves. Near-universal adoption of masks in public in combination with complementary public health measures reduces community spread when sustained. Public mask-wearing is most effective when compliance is high. Mandates are effective at increasing compliance." They recommend that public-facing entities require masks. This credible scientific body used the word "require." Thank you.
Thank you, time. Mr. Haw, that was a minute, correct?
It was a minute.
Okay.
I will, I will call time. After somebody, I will start the timer when somebody gives their name, and I will, you will hear the timer, and the timer has a cover.
Right. Sir, you're out of order. Sir, you're out of order. Our next speaker is David Grimmett.
Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, my name is David Grimmett. I'm an attorney here in Franklin. I'm also board certified in child welfare law. I'm here to give you a legal perspective as far as what the mask mandate means. I believe we can agree on three specific fundamental rights. The first is that our children have a fundamental right to education. Second is that parents have a fundamental right to choose and govern their own children. And third is that if you decide to do a mask mandate, you must show two things. You must show that there, it has a compelling interest, and second, there is no less drastic alternative. I would argue that you do not have either. First of all, I know my daughter better than anybody. I know how she learns. I know masks do not work. Second, there is a less drastic alternative. Parents should be allowed to choose what they want and how their children go to school. At the end of the day, I see these people with the masks. They believe it is best for their children. I believe it is not. I should be given the choice. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chelsea Gilbert. Chelsea Gilbert.
All right, short person on, on deck. I'm not starting yet. Chelsea Gilbert, District 4, Brad Fiskus's district. Hi, Brad, great to see you again. So I got Adeline, Adeline here. She is holding a box, and it says right here, just for our lovely, lovely audience, "The general-use mask cannot eliminate the risk of contracting an infectious disease." Go figure! I'll tell you what you are going to contract. Is this a pretty picture or what? This is what is floating around. Bacteria, fungus, cases of strep and pneumonia have been found on masks brought into labs. We know that you have money allocated for, basically for slowing the spread and addressing the, the health needs of our county. We demand, as parents of Williamson County, that you take these masks to, from the kids at the end of the week, and take them to labs, and get them tested. We want to know what's on those masks, and I ask parents who agree to stand with me now, right now, stand. We want those masks tested. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chelsea Medley.
Hi, I'm Chelsea from District 11. Please reinstate a mask mandate and all other mitigation strategies used last year. I'm a nurse practitioner. My son is too young to be vaccinated, and right now, COVID cases are rising in our county and state. I felt very comfortable last year with the measures that were taken to keep our kids safe, but even with all those measures, my son still got COVID from a student he sat beside at lunch, the only time in the day he was unmasked. The Delta variant spreads much easier than previous variants. We are also seeing more and more kids with severe cases. If my son was able to catch COVID in last year's environment with a less transmissible variant, consider the spread we'll see this year with the majority of students and staff unmasked. As long as we have a large, vulnerable population who can't access the vaccine, we must wear masks to protect them and keep them in school. You are entrusted with the safety of students, and I know you don't take that lightly. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Angela Zwill. And, Ms. Will, before you start, could I have one of the deputies come stand in this middle section, please? Like, and, yes, thank you, thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time. My name is Angela Zwill. I'm a nurse practitioner.
I'm sorry, Angela.
Sure.
Please go ahead.
Thanks. I'm a nurse practitioner at a pretty well-known walk-in clinic here in Williamson County, and also a mom to two kids at College Grove Elementary. My experience in the last 18 months, as you can imagine, has been quite a roller coaster, and we've seen a lot of surges in numbers, but this year, we've seen it affecting kids more so. I've had a two-year-old and a seven-year-old positive in my last shift, a guidance counselor from Murray County who had started a week previous to us, and it's not going to end. And even regardless of what your stance on masks is, we all want our kids to be in school. We want the schools to operate. We want the teachers to be healthy. And this pandemic has been called a pandemic of the unvaccinated, and unfortunately, a lot of our kids are 12 and under, and they're in their group. And it's, it's our job to protect them, and yours, and I hope you do it.
Our next speaker is Britt Maxwell.
Hello, I'm Britt Maxwell. I'm a doctor at one of the big hospitals on West End. I'm a father of two that are too young to get vaccinated, and I'm here because I'm afraid for them. I'm afraid for the choice that they can't make, because the facts are clear. Kids are getting sick. It's happening now. Pediatric ICUs and ERs across the country, across the south, are being stretched to capacity in Texas, Arkansas, Louisiana, Missouri, and it will happen here eventually. It's a myth that kids can't pass to other kids because they can. It's happened at sporting events and camps, and it will happen in schools, but I'm a grown-up doctor, and kids aren't just victims, they're vectors for disease transmission. At my hospital, we're seeing otherwise healthy people in their 30s and 40s getting sick, and the case counts are going up exponentially, and some are dying. And we have to do everything we can to protect the whole community, and that means the people in this room that don't agree with me, and their kids in the classrooms. If we don't do this, we're going to have school shutdowns and quarantines and needless tragedies, and I don't want that for my community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, I believe it's Alma. I'm sorry, I can't, it's, the last thing you start, okay, sorry, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Aima Honkai, a mom of two WCS students and an infectious diseases physician at Vanderbilt. I'm here to speak as a medical expert who has been immersed in the clinical care and public health mitigation of COVID-19 since this pandemic began. I'm here to urge the Board to reinstate mask mandate and other mitigation measures to protect our children. We are facing a new strain of COVID-19, the Delta variant, which is as infectious as chicken pox and causes more severe disease. The people who are most vulnerable are not vaccinated, and this includes our children under 12, who vaccines are not yet approved for. Only half of our county is fully vaccinated. As a result, the Delta variant is surging. In the last month, Vanderbilt has had 10 times more patients admitted to the adult hospital, and three times more patients admitted to the children's hospital for COVID-19. Almost every single one is unvaccinated. At the time when our children are facing the most risk, we have left them in the most danger. Following CDC guidelines and including mask mandate is the way to go.
Time. Again, again. Folks, please treat people the way you yourselves would wish to be treated. Our next speaker is Maya Neely. Our next speaker is Maya Neely.
Nancy, treat us that way.
I'm sorry, who was that? Folks? Ma'am, please go ahead. Yes. Oh, sorry. Can you hear me now? Yes.
My name is Maya Neely. I'm a pediatrician who cares for hospitalized children and have been working for over 15 years. The statistics are staggering. Over the past week, there were 21,000 new COVID diagnoses across the state, and Williamson County has had 700 new cases with a 19% positivity rate. We are seeing children in the hospital, some needing ventilator support. These numbers are incredibly difficult to hear, but turning away from them is not helpful. There is only one enemy amongst us, and that is COVID, and in order to prevent its spread, we need to mask up. It is a relatively easy thing to do with tremendous reward. We know that it works. In fact, the school board themselves have written guidelines strongly encouraging masking within schools by all personnel, but people are not listening. For the sake of the public and the sake of our children, and especially those with underlying medical conditions, or families with underlying medical conditions likely to have more severe illness, it is imperative to reinstate our masking guidelines. Nobody wants to do this, but we are now called to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer King.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
My name is Jennifer King. I am a pediatric intensive care physician and a mother of two children who attend Williamson County schools. I am very concerned for the health and well-being of our children, given the emergence of the more transmissible Delta variant of the novel coronavirus. As a pediatric ICU physician, we are seeing more younger, previously healthy children admitted with respiratory failure and acute respiratory distress syndrome as we have, than we have in prior strains. As cases in children are on the rise, this trend will only worsen if we don't act now. We have learned over the past 18 months that we can safely send our children to school in-person with appropriate mitigation strategies to prevent the spread of this virus amongst our most vulnerable population, which is our unvaccinated children and children with underlying health conditions, many of whom are not eligible for vaccination at this time. I implore you, Superintendent Golden, as well as members of the school board, to please follow the evidence and implement universal masking, frequent handwashing, and social distancing measures in keeping with the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Centers for Disease Control. Thank you. Thank you.
Sarah Essery.
I'm sorry. Deputy? Folks, we've got to cut out all of the side comments, please. This is a public meeting. You were read, you were read the rules of being here, which include business decorum. Ma'am, please go ahead.
My name is Dr. Sarah Essery. I am board certified in internal medicine.
Dr. Essery, one moment, please. Please go ahead.
I'm board certified in internal medicine and pediatrics and I'm a practicing hospital doctor. I'm also a WCS mother. I'm asking you to implement a temporary mask mandate at least until every student has had the opportunity to be vaccinated against COVID-19. This decision-
Dr. Essery, please stop for a minute.
Okay.
Please continue.
This decision is not about parents' rights. This is about students' rights to safe learning environments. The Delta variant has caused more symptomatic disease, more hospitalizations, and more deaths in otherwise healthy children. We have a vaccine that helps prevent spread and severity of COVID-19, but currently, 100% of elementary school kids are unvaccinated as well as most sixth graders. We need more time. Without a mask mandate, we will not be able to curb the surge in infections that have started.
Time.
Our next speaker is Nick Shiber? Shiber?
I want to take a little bit different tone. District 9, small business owner, Desert Storm veteran, Hillsborough parent. This meeting is nothing but a dog and pony show. These guys wearing masks right here, I've been here all day, were not wearing masks until a camera showed up. Those of you on this board that have already made up their minds are a dereliction of the duty. You're a disgrace. CDC, Tennessee Department of Health have not issued mandates or appendoned guidelines. That's it. You have no legal authority to mandate masks, yet Brad claims authority under Tennessee Code 492203A2. This code is written for educational purposes, not medical treatments. Again, zero authority to mandate masks. Do temperature checks or even contract trace. Education is your only primary duty. Brad recently said, "You seem mad." No, I'm not mad. To be clear, mad is when you go in a cave, you poke a bear and you piss him off. What you've done, you've poked the cubs. We are pissed off. When you look at this board, two names always stand out.
Time. Justin, Justin Pride.
Sir, before you get started, I've been asked to remind the audience that no personal attacks on board members will be tolerated. Thank you. Justin Pride, please continue. One moment, please. There you go.
Restart the time? Ready, go. Justin Pride, I'm representing my wife and my four kids under eight who are devastated to know that this has already been determined. Everybody that I've heard talk about mask mandates is assuming they work. There is no scientific evidence that shows that they work. I have sent you 50 studies pre-COVID that shows no studies were effective, masks were effective against viruses. It is not an assumption. They are not saving our kids. They are not. There is no scientific evidence to show that. Number two, mandates are illegal by nature. Federal code says that you are not to mandate a federal, a medical product that is by use of emergency authorization. Masks, vaccines are emergency use authorizations. They are not to be mandated under federal law. The law is on our side, the science is on our side. What is the matter with you people? You should be ashamed of yourselves, every one of you.
Our next speaker is Mary, Mary Jane Brown, I believe, I believe, Mary Jane.
I am Mary Jane Brown, proud to be an emergency physician in this great county for 35 years. My children graduated and went through this county's school system. My three grandchildren are recovering from COVID right now. God help them not to have any post-COVID complications. There is a lot of tension and a lot of fear in this room. I could use the next few minutes, seconds to give you data. I want all of you to know how much I appreciate you and the work you are doing to tackle this very difficult issue and I would leave you with one message, love. Listened. Listen, listen to all of us in this room. Observe, observe the guidelines from the CDC. Verify the sources. Do not let twisted science rule us.
Time. The next speaker is Tiffany Greer. Tiffany Greer? Tiffany, are you here? Okay.
I'm here today to share what some might think is a unique perspective. My daughter, whose name is Faith, is nine years old. She, we moved to this area five years ago when she was being treated for stage four cancer. She was given a less than 10% chance to live. It was a diagnosis that was almost unbearable. Facing death with your child teaches you a lot. It humbles you a lot. It gives you a true perspective on life and how precious and really short it is. And I also thank and trust many in our medical community. I stand in front of you today having been reminded the many harsh ways that none of us know what tomorrow holds. We all hope to die of an old age with, when a peaceful passing, but a painful situation could happen tomorrow to any of us. I am glad today to see so many parents here, parents that know their children. They typically help make best decisions for them. So I'm here to ask, please consider allowing parents to make the medical decisions for their children. Please allow the continued choice. In closing, I have had many people ask me, "If, when your daughter was undergoing chemotherapy, stage four cancer, if someone would just wear a mask to help protect her, is that what you wanted?" And I would say, "No." When my daughter was deathly sick, I kept her home. I took the precautions she needed. I would not ask a child to miss their prime because of faith. We only have a small amount of time.
Time, ma'am. Your time is up. Our next speaker is Drew Flansbaum.
Hi, I'm Dr. Drew Flansbaum. I'm an emergency room doctor and I have two kids in elementary school. My colleagues who spoke earlier have made a lot of points, so I won't repeat that. I'll just make three quick points. First, I see children and adults every single shift right now with COVID and I have never seen a child or an adult with a mask-related illness problem, but we have seen plenty of patients in respiratory failure from COVID. The masks are not any harm at all. They're inconvenient, but they're not a harm. Second, there is evidence, there is actually evidence that masks and social distancing work. They're not 100%, but seat belts are not 100% either. We wear seat belts in cars. It's a responsible thing to do. Third, if we don't mitigate this, we're going to have so many positive cases that we're arguing over masks in schools, but we're not going to have school in session because we're going to have teachers out, everybody's going to be on quarantine, we're going to be at home again, and that was miserable last year and none of us want that. So masks will at least allow us to stay in school for most of the time. And I think if you can keep one child in Williamson County, if they're on a ventilator, it'll help.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Story.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Story and I'm not here to beg you for anything. I'm here to talk about the law, the whole law, and nothing but the law. Code 1.1 of the Williamson County School Board legal status states that this board derives its authority from the General Assembly. On July 27th, Representative Griffey, along with 10 other Assembly members, released a letter stating, and I quote, "To be clear, the legislature has not granted any authority to local school boards or superintendents to require face coverings." Glenn Casada is very familiar with Ms., or I'm sorry, Mr. Fiskus is very familiar with Glenn Casada, who also signed that letter when he publicly disparaged him during the November election, which is a very clear violation of the Code of Ethics for sitting board members. It's also a violation of ethics for this board to vote in a partisan manner and not represent their constituents. Regardless of how you choose to vote today, you do not have the legal authority to issue a mandate. These parents aren't putting a mask on their children and if you try to force us to do so, I know I personally will sue. And anyone else here who will join me, please show a hand. Thank you.
Our next, our next speaker is Kyle Weaver. Ma'am, you're out of order. Our next speaker is Kyle Weaver.
Appreciate being here. I'm Kyle Weaver. I'm a retired brain tumor surgeon and a father of a daughter at Thompson Station. Whenever children come to school and leave school, if there is a child who is infected with COVID, that's a wonderful intersection to intervene. If you don't intervene, eventually, eventually, don't know how many, but that's going to come through the school and kill someone in the community. And think about how that relates to your obligations to the community. The second thing is, if you do not mitigate that maximally, unfortunately, you at least have a modicum of culpability for that death. And that is unfortunate, but is that something you were willing to have to deal with here and here, depending on what decision you make? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colleen Vanderkolk.
My name is Colleen Vanderkolk. I'm a board certified neurologist who lives in Williamson County. I'm also the proud mother of five children. I'm a physician. I believe in statistics. I follow the science. There is no evidence that masks decrease the spread of COVID-19. Masks cause issues for children and forcing them to wear a mask just goes too far. There will always be one virus or another. My sister died of H1N1 in 2009 and I take viruses seriously. We will never know the true impacts of H1N1 because we didn't test those that were asymptomatic. The virus was handled much differently. It was not politicized. No fear. Masks cause issues in the learning environment. Children who wear glasses have top, constant fog. Those who have anxiety have difficulty breathing. The masks themselves are often vectors of pathogens. WCS must advocate for patients' right to choose. The leaders of Williamson County need to recognize that the challenges the masks mandates create for young, our young children.
Time.
Let the parents choose.
Our next speaker is Leigh Allen Baker.
Yes, there you go. My name's Leigh Allen Baker and I'm a California refugee. I gave up everything there, a really successful Hollywood career, television shows, gave it all up for freedom and to come to this friendly place of Tennessee and be greeted with open arms and I love it here. I wanted to tell you that I have two vaccine-injured children and they have medical exemptions because after the seizures and the hospitalizations, after all of their immunizations, I was granted obviously a medical exemption. So my children are those rare children that will just not be able to get the vaccine and still, I would never put them in a mask because their brain needs oxygen to grow, which the neurologists couldn't confirm. Anyway, the real part of the clown show is that you all think that you actually have the authority to mandate this because there are these books that I have and I have them as a gift for you, the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, the Bill of Rights, and the Federalist Papers, and also the Bible, and these guarantee my freedom and yours and our children's to breathe oxygen.
Our next speaker is Thomas Mitchell. Thomas Mitchell. Our next speaker is Thomas Mitchell.
Please start over, sir, I'm sorry. There you go, you're good now. Try again, please. I need to control it up here. Okay, let's try one more time.
Good?
There you go.
All right, I hear me. All right. So I'm Thomas Mitchell, District 5. Seven years ago, I lost my oldest child to an unknown medical condition, undiagnosed medical condition. So I understand loss, understand that you can't control everything that is out there in front of you. Viruses, unknown medical conditions, anything. But we're here tonight for our children, not for us. We're the ones that know what's best for them. Some of us are doing that, making their choices, making choices with them for 18 years. We ask that you continue to empower us as parents and as is our right to make that choice in what's best for them. The last school year showed us the struggles our children forced by not being able to face the world as they should. Let's change that tonight. You guys have the power. By voting for parent choice, choice in masking our child, choice of not masking our child, regardless of what side you stand on, know that that's our right. If we don't, we'll set a dangerous precedent and diminish the very nature and joy of what parenting means.
Time. Our next speaker is Daniel Jordan. Daniel Jordan.
I'm former United States Marine Daniel Jordan from East Tennessee and moved here about a year and a half ago. Last year, my daughters were told if they have to sneeze, they're required to sneeze in their mask and wear that mask the rest of the day. Ladies and gentlemen, that's disgusting and shame on you that voted for that. You want to wear snot on your face all day? That's your choice. My kids will not. Science has proven that, you want your kid to wear a mask because that makes you feel good? That's fine, you do you, boo, but don't force that science, not, that non-science satanic BS on our kids. Actions have consequences. If you vote for this, we will come for you in a non-violent way. Teachers Union, Candace Owens is coming for you, school board, the deplovers will come for you politically and financially. We will vote you out. If you own a business, we will boycott your business. In the past, you dealt with sheep, now prepare yourself to deal with lions. I swore an oath to protect this country against all enemies, foreign and domestic. You harm our children, you become a domestic enemy and we will come for you politically and financially. You have awakened the ape army and we will come for you and the Holy Spirit is coming with us.
Our next speaker is David Holliday. David Holliday.
Excuse me, sir, just a second, please. There you go.
Hello, my name's Doc Holliday. I'm a high doctor from District 9. This is some, repeating what someone else said, but board, your authority comes from the General Assembly, i.e. the legislature, not the governor, which brings me to the quote by State Representative Bruce Griffey. "To be clear, the legislature has not granted any authority to local school boards or superintendents to require face coverings or promulgate any rules related to healthcare or the prevention of communicable disease." Put simply, you do not have the authority to mask our kids and you know it. You know it. Ladies and gentlemen, if this board tonight once again exceeds their legal authority and votes to mask our kids, how many people here will sign on to a class action backed by Tennessee Stands to sue these board members personally? I'm going out here in the hallway. I urge you to walk out and sign and let them see you do it.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Wells.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Wells. I have three kids in Williamson County schools and obviously I just want to talk, come in here, talk about mask policy. You know, one thing that we need to keep in mind, it's policy isn't science, but science will put a spotlight on bad policy and that's exactly what we're talking about right here. Johns Hopkins- Johns Hopkins University just this week said we need to look at the data, and we need to know what's good and what the long-term harm is, and then make a decision based on that. We're not there yet. The science is not settled. You know, I like my doctor, but my doctor's not a mask expert. These doctors, they're all wearing medical-grade masks. Have you noticed that? You're talking about voting on putting cloth on our kids' face, and these doctors who have been quoting policy to you are telling you that's acceptable PPE. Folks, I'm going to tell you right now, if you think it's okay to put a dirty napkin on a kid's face for hours on end, with touching and adjusting in a non-sterile environment, and this is going on the second year, you need a new doctor. This is no good. We Williamson County parents, we love our kids, and we already voted in action. We sent them to school without masks. Respect our choice.
Time. Our next speaker is Clay Travis.
I'm Clay Travis. I have two kids in Williamson County public schools, fifth grader and a first grader, and you all should be ashamed of the choices that you are about to make. We teach our kids that facts matter. That's why they go to school. The facts are these: masks don't work. There isn't a single scientific data that has ever proven that masks work. Also, let's talk about risk analysis, which is the key. I feel bad for all these people walking around in masks, engaging in cosmetic theater, thinking that they are making a difference against COVID. They aren't. Here's the truth. Our kids, under 25-year-olds, one in a million chance that they are going to die of COVID. They are more likely to be struck by lightning. They are more likely to be struck by lightning. They are more likely to die of the seasonal flu. Have any of you ever mandated masks for the seasonal flu? Well, shame on you, because every kid in Williamson County schools has been under more danger from the seasonal flu every year than they are for COVID. I would tell every parent here, don't let your kids wear masks.
Time. This concludes our public comments. Mr. Travis, your time is up. Your time is up. We will now take a five-minute break so that those with children or who might want to leave can leave. Five minutes, please. This meeting will come back to order. Everyone, please be seated. There will be no talking during the meeting. There will be no talking while board members are talking, and please put your signs down. Please keep them down for the duration. Thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is COVID-19 safety protocols. Superintendent Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank so many folks who've communicated with us, and I want to let you all know from our perspective, when a majority of the board asked for us to have a meeting, since that day, communication's been a bear. We've been working hard on doing all that we could to gather data, and so for so many of you that we missed calls or missed emails, I want to apologize to you upfront, and that goes for the board, too. Our communication fell below the standard that we typically have, and so I want you to know that on the front end. With respect to COVID, with that request that we meet, I want to let you all know that schools can't solve COVID. We can't. It's outside our expertise to solve COVID. We can't prevent the pandemic. We can't. And positive cases will be in our building, and we learned that last year, and that's been brought forth again this year, that when all these requests boil down and come down to school boards having to make these decisions, we are not going to solve COVID. What I can tell you is that what we can do is mitigate, and we did that last year, and some of that was mentioned in the public comment, that we did recommend that we require masks last year, and you all voted for that and voted on our return-to-school plan last year. And we continued that throughout that time. And then, at the end of the school year, and then at the end of the...
Ma'am, please, there's no talking during this portion of the meeting.
You all voted on that plan, and that plan passed. And then, at the end of the school year, we ended the mask requirement. And I will tell you, this summer, we did a summer school program with about 1,600 or so elementary, middle school students, and of course, we had some high school students on campus as we always do. And in that time, we did not have any positive cases in our school programs. We did have a couple in the Child Care SAC program, but in our summer school programs, we did not. And that reflected those community numbers. The community numbers dropped, and anyone can dig those up on some of the websites in the community and show that those numbers dropped, and we reflected that drop back in the summertime. And as we went into this summer, you may remember me speaking in June and said, "At this stage, y'all, I don't see us recommending masks based on what we've experienced in those few weeks leading up to our June meeting," and we did not make a request from you. You know, even as late as May 21st, the CDC had a very clear recommendation that schools require masks. Since that time, this summer, the CDC substantially changed their recommendations, and I want to walk through that a little bit because the guidance from the CDC is different from what it was last year. And the CDC recommended, in their July recommendations for school opening, that schools consider what they called a layered approach, that localities monitor local conditions and consider layers. We've studied and re-studied those guidelines. We've looked at other references, other recommendations and guidelines across the country. We've had a lot of discussions with local health providers and tried to get a feel for the implementation of those CDC guidelines. And I actually have a copy in front of me. Anyone can pull that up on the CDC website. And they start with vaccinations, and in the quote in the CDC Guidelines for Schools is vaccination is currently the leading public health prevention strategy to end the COVID-19 pandemic, and that's outside our control. That is something that they put in there for our information. And then they do recommend masks, and they've made it clear in their writings that they recommend universal masks.
Excuse me, Superintendent Golden.
Please put your signs down, and sir in the back, please stop making hand gestures to the board. Thank you. And this group in here, this group in here, please stop the side comments. We may get to a point where people will be asked to be removed. Can we all agree on that? That is what we signed up for when you came to this meeting tonight. You agreed not to be disruptive. You agreed that you would keep your signs down, and you agreed that you would not make comments during this meeting. This meeting will go a lot faster if you'll please abide by the expectations that we've set. Thank you. Please continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the CDC also recommends social distancing of at least three feet when possible. They include that mask recommendation. They recommend hand washing, ventilation, staying home when sick, the Health Department contact tracing, cleaning and disinfecting in that layered approach. And when you read the final element of the key takeaways, as the CDC describes them, it states that "localities should monitor community transmission, vaccination coverage, screening, testing, and occurrence of outbreaks to guide decisions on the level of layered prevention strategies." And when we made our recommendations a few weeks ago and established our mitigation strategies that we posted on our website and gave those explanations, our safety and nursing staff came to the conclusion to strongly recommend masks, and many of you I know have seen that language, recommend, and we have some other terms in there related to that strong encouragement for masks. And we did that a few weeks ago. We've had some videos that we posted walking through that as well. And that was based on our staff's review of the CDC guidelines. And as we go through that, you all know that conditions have changed, and we continue to monitor those on a daily basis. Now, every authority that I'm aware of, from the CDC guidelines to the folks I've heard speak at press conferences and answer questions at the state level, have put this responsibility on you as board members. The legal advice we've received from our attorneys, from the county attorneys, is that if there is to be a mask requirement, it requires a board vote. They've put that burden on you. Right or wrong, that's where this burden is. At least for now. We don't know what the future holds, but that's what we know now. And you've received emails that says it's common sense that all should wear masks. You've received emails that it's common sense that no one should be required to wear a mask, and you're left with that responsibility of having to make the best decision you can based on your elected position. And I'm not in your shoes, and I can't imagine what it's like, because I haven't lived it. It's a different responsibility, and it's a different relationship. But what I can tell you is that as superintendent, I consider myself to have that responsibility to make a recommendation to you because everyone we know has placed that burden on you. And I want to let you know that our health and safety team has spent a lot of time, especially these last few days, because the majority of you did ask that we have this discussion. And ultimately, our health and safety team has to make a judgment for a recommendation to you, and based on the CDC guidelines, they've done it, we've done it, I've done it, based on that local consideration applied to that layered approach the CDC has referenced. And we spent time these last few days analyzing that, trying to get all the data we could from schools. We've missed phone calls because we've had so many meetings with each other. We've gone through that whole process to meet your request to make a recommendation. And we do have a recommendation, and I'm going to tell you what the recommendation is, and then I'm going to give you a few bullet points, and then I know that there is potential for questions, and Gary Anderson and Mandy Thompson, who are in our Health and Safety Department, are here to answer those detailed questions from you when the time comes, and of course, Mike Fletcher is here as well. And so I want to be as clear and succinct as I can with our recommendation based on everything we've experienced, based on all those guidelines. "I am recommending that you require masks for students, staff, and visitors in the elementary grade levels inside all buildings and buses effective Thursday, August 12th, to give us a day to plan." And I'm going to give you some explanations as to what our health professionals walk through with that. Number one, vaccinations, as I mentioned, is number one with the CDC recommendations. In our community, about 51% of our community is vaccinated. That's the highest in the state. For 12-plus, about 61% of our total community is vaccinated, and that's if you take out the younger ages under 12. What we do know from recent data, the 12 to 20 age group is increasing in vaccinations here in our community. And of course, we all know, none of our elementary students are vaccinated because they're under the age of 12. Our community numbers have gone up since we initially made the recommendations to encourage masks, and strongly encourage masks. From 531 positive cases on July 26th to 1,229 positive cases on August 8th. Children, based on the numbers that I have from our health staff, from August 2nd to August 8th of this month, we have had 97 positive reported cases from children in the 0 to 10 age group. 0 to 10 age group. In our buildings, based on the data that we have got in the last couple of days, about 27%, an estimated 27% of our students at the elementary levels have been wearing masks voluntarily. At the elementary level, Madam Chair, also, at the elementary level, our nurses report a total of 25 positive cases reported since we have been in school Friday. So that's Friday, the weekend, Monday, and Tuesday, a total of 27 cases at the elementary level over the course of three school days. I will tell you, those are new reported cases. From what our health professionals, from what our nurses tell us, that we averaged about three to four positive cases across the district at our elementary last year. So with that short window of data, granted, three days, with that short window of data, we've seen an increase in the start of school compared to what we saw last year at the elementary level. Couple of other facts that we've gotten. Our nurses report that in their research, that they've seen an increase in pediatric symptomatic COVID cases from the reports we've gotten from those in hospitals locally. And of course, we have seen the reports about those cases in other regions of the country. Couple of other items related to that. We have had conversations with some of our peers in Middle Tennessee, and they have reported similar increases compared to what they experienced at the elementary level last year. I will tell you also, I want to make sure you all know that the state no longer gives us the option of going remote and it counting as a school day. The attorney for the State Department of Education told superintendents last week that if you reach a point where you have to go remote as a result of COVID, it will count as what they call a stockpile day, an inclement weather day. They can drill down and do drill down to the school level. But for example, if a school can't go to school because of this, that counts as one of, for us, one of our 10 inclement weather days for the school year. I just want to make sure you're aware of that. So those continuous learning plans are no longer an option. With that, I know that you will likely have many questions, but that is our recommendation based on what we have. And certainly, if a motion comes on the floor, we'll certainly respect that and respect the decision of this school board either way.
So Superintendent Golden, would you please recap the staff recommendation?
Madam Chair, the staff recommends that the board vote to require masks for students, staff, and visitors at the elementary grade levels inside all buildings and buses effective Thursday, August 12th. And if I may, Madam Chair, if I may, Madam Chair, we don't know how long this will last. It's the recommendation of our health staff, but I...
Superintendent Golden, I'm going to ask you to take a pause here so we can get this group, ask the group to please stop talking again.
And Madam Chair, if I may, we don't know how long this will last, and I don't want it to last. We did not want to, we did not and do not want to make...
Excuse me. Deputy, can you please escort the man in the back out, please? Thank you with the clipboard. Thank you.
We certainly... Thank you, Madam Chair.
Excuse me.
The two core areas...
Deputy, please. We're going to take a five-minute break.
We're going to reconvene now. We'll ask everyone to put the signs down, and we'll take another break if we need to clear the auditorium again. Mr. Golden, please, please... Ma'am, please leave. Please go ahead. Thank you. Ma'am. We're going to resume our meeting now. Mr. Golden, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to mention a couple of core elements in that context of us not wanting to continue this if our medical folks come to that conclusion. Number one, a key component of this is the fact that those elementary school students don't have access to the vaccine and don't have that strategy as a choice for them. A second key element of that is the volume of cases related to elementary school students. So I want you all to know that in the event you vote for this, if there is a motion and you vote, those are two key elements that our nursing staff is going to work on. And as soon as they make that determination in consultation with all the local folks that we can get, if they can make that recommendation to remove it, we'll bring that to you as quickly as we can. The final thing I want to mention to you is, this is a judgment call. There is no, it's professional judgment, and there is no clear answer. The reason you've received upwards of 1,000 emails on all imaginable sides of this issue, all imaginable ideas related to this issue is because there is no clear answer. The reason you're hearing from so many folks with their thoughts is because there is no clear answer. What we are recommending is the best judgment we have based on all the analysis we have. And if you disagree, we respect that because you've been put in this position of having to make this decision. So that's our recommendation, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Wimberly.
Madam Chair, I believe you need...
Excuse me. Let me turn your microphone on. There you go.
Madam Chair, I believe you need a motion for us to discuss. So I move to approve staff recommendation.
We have a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Mitchell. We'll move to discussion now. Mr. Fiskus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And so, as we've been here this evening, the first thing that we must all acknowledge is that we want what's best for the children of WCS. I'm going to wait. I'm going to wait. Secondly, we all agree, for the majority of students, their education best happens in a classroom with the teacher. Online school and other alternatives work well for some students, but not for all. And as a board, we're expected to provide a free and appropriate public education for all students without exception. During the past year, in April, on April 12th, the State Board of Education, as Mr. Golden referred to, approved a new policy to not allow schools to operate on a hybrid system where some students learning in person and others remote. Instead, we were required to enroll students into distinct virtual schools. As a result, a K-8 school was formed and a 912 school was formed. These virtual schools are not designed to be gap measures when schools or classes need to shift off-campus because of COVID exposures, but to be actual operating schools in addition to the regular brick-and-mortar classrooms. As a result, as he said, we would have to use inclement weather days to be able to do a remote instruction-type setting. So then, what options do we have to ensure that we're operating on-campus and in class with instruction from our incredible teaching staff? The CDC and the Department of Education recommend mitigation strategies. And so, last year, as we said at the beginning of the year, that this board voted, a student or staff member was sick, they should stay home, regular hand washing, social distancing, mask-wearing. And additionally, illness protocol management was provided in partnership with the Williamson County Health Department. Second semester, an additional strategy was added as persons 16 and older had access to a safe and effective vaccine. WCS, in partnership with Williamson County Health and Tennessee Department of Health, offered a vaccine clinic for staff, and approximately 50% of staff were vaccinated through those clinics. Others throughout the community also had access to vaccines. And then, more recently, children ages 12 to 15 years also were granted access. As of this morning, 51.5% of all Williamson Countyans ages 12 and older are fully vaccinated. Another 5.4% have had at least one dose. So we're at about 57% right now. So as we enter the school year, we have an additional mitigation strategy that we didn't have last school year, but it doesn't apply to our youngest community because they've not been authorized to receive them yet. And so, approximately 18,000 members of our school system cannot add this layer of protection because they're under age 12. Therefore, at a minimum, we have to keep the other layers in place. Stay home when sick, regular hygiene practices, socially distance when possible, mask-wearing as recommended, and management of positive cases and contact tracing and quarantine protocols by the Williamson County Health Department. The layers that we had in place for the 2021 school year provided us the opportunity to be on campus, providing education for all through in-person and virtual instruction. I called Tennessee School Board Association today and talked to their legal counsel because I've had several questions about whether we actually have the authority or not. And so, this is a response. As a school board, we're charged with several duties, including but not limited to maintaining policies that align with state and federal laws, preparing and presenting and operating budget to the county commission, hiring and evaluating the superintendent. And then, as it pertains to the matters at hand tonight, the board is tasked with management and control of schools and facilities that are under the jurisdiction of the district. So as a part of this task, the board is expected to shape environments for learning and ensure the health and safety of students in these environments. Specific courts have recognized the role of schools' responsibility in regards to in loco parentis. This is the act of a parent sending their child or children to school where it removes their children from the physical control of that parent. While this act doesn't remove the responsibility of a parent for their child, parents share some of that responsibility with the school and the district. This means that schools assume custody of students or act in place of parents, or instead...
We'll pause. Mr. Fiskus, please continue.
That they'll assume custody of students or act in place, or instead of a parent, while the child is in the care of the school. The act of parenting, sending a child, of a parent sending a child to school transfers that authority to the students, for the students, to educators in that building. Schools become responsible for the education, discipline, safety, and safety of the children and its care. The law further defines that duty to protect students includes a duty to anticipate foreseeable dangers and to take responsible steps to protect those students from that foreseeable danger. It is because it is our duty to protect students within our care from foreseeable danger, and because of the impact COVID has demonstrated on disrupting WCS's ability to provide a free and appropriate public education for all, that's why I'll be voting for the recommendation tonight. As Mr. Golden said, as the current trend of infections decline, positivity rate decreases and/or vaccines become available for all of the other students, I would be in favor of revisiting the mask optional policy. But in the immediate future, it's in the best interest, in the opinion of TSBA and myself, as well as CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics, and the multiple healthcare workers who emailed us this week, that we should expect all people who are coming, especially into our elementary school buildings and buses, to wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus. Mr. Cash? Mr. Cash?
Yes?
I'm sorry. I was, I didn't mean to raise my voice at you. I was trying to make sure that you heard because there was some disruption.
Got to give me a chance to move, you know?
Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Cash.
Thank you for all that, Brad. I don't even know where to go. Sometimes, I don't even know where to go tonight and think about this. I thought we had a plan, and I commended Jason for the plan to go to school as normal as possible. I commended him for making mass a choice. All last year, our parents were begging to have some input for their children. Now, we, last year in November, we had quite a spike. And that's when Mr. Golden said, "You know what? We're going to look at our data, our school data, and we're going to take it from there. And we're going to go school by school." And it worked. It really worked. I mean, we still had problems with quarantines, but the basic plan was working. And that's where I thought we were going. And I commended him for that. But now, in the last three weeks, we've had an uptick. And I'm looking at this little chart that we got, that there's, and somebody, I think you said 27 cases in the elementary school?
27% chose to wear masks. The elementary school had a total of 25.
So since, this is what I'm going to, is there any way, I mean, we didn't even have a meeting on this. We got this information at 4:19 this afternoon. And the email stating that you had made up your mind and you were going to, you know, tell the board what your plans were an hour or so before that. And here we are, trying to make decisions for all these children. And my point here, my point here is, and I sent this to you yesterday, Mr. Golden, never got an answer. I understand you're busy. Phone calls, you don't get an answer. I understand you're busy. But why can't we give this a chance to work and use our school... Use our school data? Now, but I'm looking, I'm looking at this, and I can see... Now, and, but I'm looking, I'm looking at this, and I can see also that these, these numbers are growing much faster, and I, I did get with, uh, Mr. Anderson. And, you know, we talked about it, and we finally, we started digging into last year's. And it took a while to get to this, this number. But still, why can't we, why can't we work for all the people rather than just put that rag on your face? That, that's, that's my question.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Ladies? No more outbursts, please, ladies.
If I may, Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Cash, you'd asked me a question, and thank you for that question. That's a, that's a reasonable question, and it's the very question that we, one of the very questions that we've been working through the last few days, uh, when we were asked to have that meeting. What we have seen is that, that quick increase. Uh, we don't know what the future holds. Uh, ultimately, when our professional staff looked at that and, and saw the numbers just those first three days, granted, it's three days, uh, it, it, it triggered those recommendations. One of the reasons you had the recommendation so late is because frankly, we had not made a decision. We did not make a decision on Friday, uh, when the, when the, when the majority of the board asked us to have a meeting. We went to work trying to dig in and trying to, trying to determine, is there, is, 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 where, where should we be? Uh, and I do wanna, um, uh, invite Ms. Thompson, who's, uh, who's our, who's our nurse leader, Mr. Anderson, who's our, who is our executive director of, uh, of our, of health and safety, uh, to, to shed any additional light in that because, because of the depth of that work we've been going through over these last few days, to, to try to give you an answer to the question. The final thing I'm gonna mention before I, before I invite them to speak is, again, in reference to what, to what I said earlier, this is a professional judgment call. Um, we may not be able to look back and say, hey, blank decision, solve this issue. Uh, the CDC talks about these layers, and, and they actually, if you, if you get into the depth of their recommendations, they, you've referenced something called the Swiss cheese approach, where you have layer and layer of mitigation strategies. What we focused on at the very beginning of, of us speaking to our families to prepare for this school year is, if you're sick, stay home. Uh, and that's, you, we all know that over the years, probably all of us could admit to sometime or other, you know what, pushing through. Uh, but we've made that our emphasis for schools because some of those items we couldn't control. Uh, based on the numbers at the time, we could not conclude professionally that we, that requiring mask was appropriate because it is, it is difficult. It is hard for some students. Uh, but ultimately, with what our folks saw those first, those first two, two and a half, three days, that's, that's where our professional staff landed, and that's where I feel like I need to make the recommendation. Uh, Ms. Thompson, Mr. Anderson?
Sorry, Mr. Anderson. There you go.
So, we've got a motion on the floor. Uh, can, uh, can I make another motion that we do? Is that, uh...
You can amend the motion, Mr. Cash.
Well, I mean, an amendment, I understand that, but, uh, an amendment, because I'm, I wanna change it. So I'll make an amendment that we give this about three more weeks and watch these numbers very closely.
Mr. Cash, I'm advised that's not a, a proper amendment. That's an amendment to defer or table.
Well, that's, that's what I was asking, Ms. Chairman. That's what I was asking. That's why I said that.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair, um, just to facilitate this, if Mr. Cash is asking to require masks at the elementary level effective a different date, is that what you're asking? Or are you asking for a deferral? I just didn't know which.
I'm asking, I'm asking that we give this a chance and, and see what the data is from our schools.
Mr. Cook, I'm gonna ask you for your input here, please.
Depends on the intent of the, um, motion. Are you asking that this board not take action on this? Or are you asking that this board take action on it, but delay it, the implementation? They're two different things. One would be amendment, one's a deferral. What is your intent?
Well, we could take action and defer it. I mean, if that's what you wanna do.
No, sir, it's...
Mr. Mitchell, let me ask Mr. Cook if he has anything else he wants to say.
Now, go ahead. Mitch.
Point of order I'd like to make is that the motion on the floor is to approve Mr. Golden's recommendation. And the recommendation is to implement on Thursday. So if I, if I might, Mr. Cash, I believe Mr. Cash's recommended amendment is to modify the implementation date for three weeks, not to table the motion itself. So that would be, that's my point of order, is if we understand what the motion, the true motion is.
That's correct. That is correct. And again, if it's your intent that this board wait to take action and wait to see what those numbers are, it's a motion to defer. If you wanna amend the motion, if you wanna amend the emotion to change the implementation date, that's an amendment. That's a motion to amend. So it depends on your intent, sir.
Sir? Mr. Cash, please go ahead.
I would like to wait for those to see how these numbers develop.
So you would like to make a motion to defer the action? Don't do this to me.
I want to, yes, I'd like to defer it and, and look at...
Do you have a specific date you would like to? The next special meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting, or?
Well, I, I'd, I'd say, you know, give it three weeks because we don't want these numbers to get out of control either.
Okay, well, then make a motion to defer the action.
Okay, I'll make a motion to defer the action for three weeks.
Okay, is there a second? Ms. Emerson seconds. So, Mr. Cook, according to procedure, we will vote on the amendment first, but I...
You, you vote on, it gets a separate motion to defer, so, and it's non-debatable, so you take the action. Just take a vote on it, whether you wanna defer it.
Okay, so we're, so we will take a vote? Yes, Mr. Galvin?
I'd just like to know a date. It is August 30th, that's three weeks from today. Is that the date that Mr. Cash wants to use as the, as the motion?
Well, that would be fine. It would give us a chance and everybody to see that, uh, what's going on with this virus and, and see where it's at.
If I may make a recommendation, why don't you do it to the next regular schedule? Because what you're gonna have to do, if you do the 30th, you're gonna be calling a special call meeting, but that's not a regular scheduled meeting, is my point.
So, so...
So, I mean, you can make a motion with specific date.
September 20th is the next board meeting.
Okay, you've...
If...
You've got a motion and a second to defer it without a date on it, okay? That's what you're voting on right now. Is that understood?
Is that technically a table? That there's not a date, not a...
It's a, yeah, it's technically a table. You gotta remove from table, but it's also called a deferral, so, yeah.
Please. Go ahead.
So, thank you. I'm, I'm just looking for a clear definition of what we're getting ready to vote on, okay? And we can't debate on the, on the motion to defer is a non-debatable motion. So what we're looking to do is, for all intents and purposes, we're looking to table this motion without a future date because there's not been a date given to defer. Correct me if I'm underst...
No, you're absolutely correct, and you will need to have a motion and a second to get it back on the table at a future date.
Right, and that will, if this motion passes, motion to defer passes, our meeting is pretty much over then.
That's correct.
Just, just a second, please. Um, Mr., Mr., um, Golden, Mr. Cook. So I have a number of speakers in line to speak on the original motion, but now we have speakers that want to ask questions on the second motion, so...
If they're procedural questions, they cannot, you cannot debate the actual motion, okay?
Okay. So, uh, if your, if your question is procedural in nature, Ms. Cleveland? One moment, let me turn your mic on.
I believe it is. It's, if we defer this, is your plan still going to be in effect in two weeks? Are you still gonna propose that same plan? Is that the idea? Or it could change because of the numbers?
It, it could change. I can't commit that it, that it would...
Okay, so we're not in two weeks gonna come and vote on the plan again. It can change at any time. Okay, I, I get it. Okay.
Any other procedural questions? Mr. Cash?
Oh, I, I think three weeks, I mean, I think a date in there would be a good, a good timeframe to look at this. You know, to, I mean, rather than leave it open-ended.
Mr. Cook, can you please respond?
Absolutely. You've got a second. Also, if you would like to amend your motion to include a specific date, then feel free. The second will have to agree to it.
And if I may, Mr. Cash, from a facilitation standpoint, three weeks from today is August 31st. Um, the day before that is Monday, the 30th.
Well, we can just leave it like it, like the motion is.
So...
If I may, Madam Chair, just from a clarification standpoint, ask Mr. Cook, based on what Mr. Cash said, is, is that a motion to defer to August 31st, based on, based on him saying three weeks?
No, sir. No, sir. The motion has not been changed because you would still have to...
No, I'm not, I have a...
Right now, there is no specific date, so what you've got is got a motion to basically table is correct. So to get that back on at a meeting, you would have to get that back up on the table by a motion in a second.
So right now, the vote is to table. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, without, without a date. So, board members, um, a yes vote means you're in favor, a no vote means you are not in favor. Board members, will you please vote?
Your vote is three yes, seven no.
Okay, so we are back to the original motion? Is that correct, Mr. Cook? Okay, are there other questions and discussion on the original motion?
I would do the, and Mr. Cat, Mr., Mr., Cook, thank you. The people who had previously stated their order, their request to speak, I believe their requests are, are then basically reinstated, correct?
They are coming back in now. They were wiped out with the last vote. Right. Right. I don't know if I can construct, reconstruct the appropriate order. Mr. Cook, would you please advise?
If you all remember what order it was, I would say just go by this. You're still gonna be...
Okay, so Sheila was next, so... And then who? Sheila? So Sheila, Jen, Jay, was there, Mr. Haw? Anyone else? Okay, thanks for reconstructing.
Do you want us to clear this?
I'll, I'll just turn the microphones on. Ms. Cleveland?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I am very much pro-choice. There's no question about it. But I, and I also, I like that the middle school and high school are pro-choice on what they're doing. I feel that WCS have provided options for the middle and high school students. They can either mask up, get vaccinated, or enroll on the online school. So we've done everything as we can responsibly to be able to give the choices, and now I think it is up to the parents. There's no question about that. But, but the, what I do have a problem with is, you know, the elementary schools don't have a choice. Their parents don't have, they, they can't get the kids to be vaccinated. Online school has already proven that it's, it's, kids can't, elementary school kids cannot go online. Their education really suffers, and that's what we're all about, is education. And we proved that last year. It just was not a pretty sight, and if these kids go remote, it's gonna hurt them. And then we also have to think about the families. We've got a lot of two-income families. Financially, it really hurt them last year. The ones that, you know, somebody had to stay home. And so I think about the whole picture. Yes, I believe in pro-choice, but when you have the elementary kids, there are no choices yet for them. It's, they, it's no, but...
Ms. Cleveland?
I think...
Please, please continue your remarks.
I just think I, the responsibility of keeping all the kids safe in elementary school is very, very important to keep them in the classroom. It's very important to me. Again, like I said, I'm very happy middle and high school get the choice because we've given them options, but the elementary school just doesn't. Thank you.
Ms. Abria? Brian? Let's try again. Okay?
I'll just lean in. Okay, so I guess I'll start by saying, for the record, I absolutely hate masks. I hate them. But, at the same time, there's an issue in my personal life that requires me to wear them, and those of you who know me know what that is, and so we'll leave that at that. Um, the, those of you who know me as well know that I hate conflict. It makes me really sad to see where we are as a community right now, to see the tension and the anger and the frustration. We're all frustrated. We're all sad. We're all wanting to do what's best for our kids. Okay, that's the bottom line. And I have people in this crowd and watching at home that I love and respect dearly that sit on both sides of this issue. And I, I just hate that it's become politicized because the health and safety of our students is not a political issue. It doesn't, a virus doesn't infect people based on who they voted for or what party they affiliate with. None of that matters. This is just the health and safety of our kids. And... Right, all kids. And the point is, we've seen what happens when we have given the choice. We've given the choice in the last few days. About 20 to 25%, they said, at the district level, they did a survey, they said 27%. I called some of the principals that live and work in my district, District 5, just to hear from them directly what they were noticing, what they were seeing, what they were experiencing in the classroom. And with overwhelming agreement, they realized that this year, the COVID infection is different. It's different than it was last year. They said that there were 20 to 25% of their kids and staff that were wearing masks, and that's not how universal masking works. We need a majority of the kids in the classroom wearing them in order for it to prevent infection and spread. The other thing they noticed, all of them overwhelmingly said that they would rather be teaching in person than remotely. And now we've heard that you can't even have the option to teach remotely. So what are those kids that get quarantined as this virus spreads, as we're already seeing in Nolan'sville in particular, there was a church camp, and it's spreading? There's this, it's a hotspot. So those kids came to school, and it's, it's going around. And so the principals are afraid that they're gonna be sending all their kids home, having low staff, not knowing, you know, how long we're gonna be even staying in school. And so I, I do agree that I appreciate the recommendation for this, um, universal masking in the elementary schools. I, I do have some questions, though. I wonder what we are considering for the students that are 11 in middle school because they also don't have an access to the vaccine yet. So I guess, should I ask that question in the middle of this, or?
Sure, we'd be happy to answer that. Uh, Ms. Thompson, if you would?
Okay, um, so my name's Mandy, and I'm a nurse that works with the school, and I have to say, um, a healthcare professional working amongst academic people is a challenge, and it's also a wonderful place to be because you're working with... because you're working with the future of our community and love working with the kids. We were anticipating a very healthy year until we approached the last couple of weeks. And just short of the first days of school, we started to hear reports of positive cases. And so we began tracking and giving that information over to the Health Department as we heard of the cases. And then we began school with the encouragement and recommendation to wear masks. And then in the elementary setting to strongly advise because we knew from CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics and under a nursing jurisdiction, we are employed by the school. However, we have a responsibility to the Board of Nursing. And so therefore, we look at the all rules and recommendations that come from all perspectives. When we started our first school days, we began hearing reports of positive cases. And if I compare it to last year, we'd have one case maybe a week. And we were able to contact trace, really look at that information. The first day alone, we began hearing multiple reports. Over the weekend, I heard multiple reports from all different nurses, principals, superintendents, all different people in the schools. And then we came to Monday. And then we had another significant increase of report of positive cases, all of which we're trying to track and at least get a basic notification out to the families that could have possibly been in some way, shape, or form in some exposure because as what we know from last year, the quarantine process, which took many days for people to hear of even being possibly in close contact, was really at day five, six, or later. So we're trying to get the notification out so that people would in fact respond and possibly advise their child to wear a mask. When we looked at the percentage of people that chose to wear a mask in correlation with a significant rise in number of cases, we started to evaluate the information and think about, how can we help those who can't help themselves? And with the vaccination eligibility only for the majority in the elementary setting, they're ineligible. The majority of the people in the elementary setting are ineligible. And then when you look at the middle school setting, the majority of that age group is eligible. So to answer your question, the majority are eligible in that setting.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'm nervous to do this because procedurally, I guess I'll have to ask, is there, do I make a motion to amend if I want to amend this to include everyone under the age of 12? Okay. Okay. A motion to include everyone under the age of 12.
Ms. Abria, you make a motion to amend to include everyone under age 12?
Who doesn't have the option to have the vaccine if they choose.
Okay. Do we have a second? Mr. Mitchell, seconds? So do we, is this debatable? Okay, so.
Can I speak to it first?
Yes.
Yes, just a note, Ms. Abria, before you speak to it, I've got the order from the previous motion. So we have that this time. Okay. Please go ahead.
Okay. So basically, I've had a lot of people telling me that I'm only doing this for personal reasons. And I think this is proof that I'm not because my kids are in elementary school. So obviously, I'd be happy with the way it was worded the first time. But I want to tell you that I watched the livestream with Dr. Lisa Piercy, the Commissioner of the Department of Health, and Commissioner Schwinn, the Commissioner from the Department of Education for the state of Tennessee on Friday. And they were asked, would you recommend a mask mandate as a doctor? Dr. Piercy's a doctor. And what do you recommend, things like that? And she, I transcribed her words because I felt it was important. She said, the key word is parents. Okay? Obviously, we've heard a lot from parents, so we're good on that. Nobody debates the effectiveness of masks. That's a quote from Dr. Piercy. Nobody debates the effectiveness of masks. I'm just quoting her. Parents need to weigh into the decision in multiple ways. They need to lobby their elected school board, which obviously they are. The parent has a choice on that, so it's a hyper-local decision in conjunction with the school board. Parents make the best decisions for their kids. She doesn't know. Agreed. She doesn't know the dynamics in the local counties, but the school boards do. So if the board makes that decision, that's their local decision, but it needs to be heavily influenced by the opinion of the parents. I have to tell you, as the one, I guess, pretty vocal proponent for universal masking, albeit temporary, I'm going to get to that in a second, I've heard from so many parents of high-risk kids that are afraid to say anything very publicly because obviously, they have medical-sensitive information that they're sharing. But they also are, I mean, this is intimidating, y'all. I didn't sign up for this when I ran for the school board. I didn't sign up to be making medical health decisions here, but I did sign up to do what the Code of Ethics says right here in front of me. It says, "I will at all times think in terms of students first, always determining other important things according to how they affect the education and development of students." The medical professionals say that in order for these students to stay in school and learning in person safely, we need to have at least a temporary universal mask mandate. Okay? And I firmly believe we need to have it for anybody who is not able to have a choice to be vaccinated.
Ma'am? Please refrain from clapping and outburst. Ms. Abria, please continue.
I'm a former teacher, and I'm an advocate, and I am a mom. And I need to stay in my lane and listen to the medical experts. They all overwhelmingly recommend that we should be doing this to keep our kids safely in school. That's all.
Next up, Mr. Cash.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, so there is an amendment that has been seconded on the floor. Mr. Cash, please go ahead.
Well, just a couple of things. You know, you always hear, I've heard from this doctor or this doctor, or this professor, this scientist. We have heard that for almost two years. And it's different from everyone. There are two sides.
There you go, Mr. Cash, sorry.
There are two sides to this whole issue here. So just asking a doctor or listening to a video, I mean, I got on several today looking at pros and cons. And I mean, it's just, the spectrum's way out here. We are, like I said a year ago about this time, data, 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 who do you believe? Bring three scientists in here, and none of them will agree. And we're still in that situation. But getting back to the kids, everybody's talking about the age group and waiting for them to get vaccinated. What makes anyone on this board think parents are going to go out and vaccinate children in elementary school? Anyhow. We have enough, we have enough problem getting people to keep their boosters and whatnot updated for the things that have to be done. I don't like hearing the, when they get vaccinated. There's many people vaccinated right now that are sick. And I'm just, you know, they're vaccinated and they're getting sick. Okay, it's like the flu shot now. You don't get it as bad. Well, hopefully, this is working, some. But I'm not in favor of the school saying stuff like in our protocol, if your children are vaccinated, they won't be quarantined. What message is that sending to parents? Is this, all I see here is the people are being pushed into a corner to get vaccinated. Everywhere you look, that's all you hear. And I'm hearing it right here in this school system. That is not the total answer. Kids are going to get sick. So I don't agree with this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Mr. Wimberly?
I wonder if we can get a staff opinion on the amendment because it strikes me that this would be quite difficult to enforce. But I would, I'd like the staff opinion on it.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Ms. Thompson addressed their recommendation to me. That was part of what we talked about. We talked about the medical and we talked about the practical. And based on what I heard from our nurses, the medical was that clearly at the elementary school level, the elementary students did not have that opportunity. It's not our call whether they do or not. You're right that enforcement is a little bit difficult. Part of what I heard from our nursing staff with respect to sixth graders in essence, right? Those who generally speak in 11 and turning 12, is that in addition to what Ms. Thompson said about majority of those having that opportunity if they chose, those sixth graders are every day, some of them are turning 12. And so ultimately, when they looked at the numbers compared, what we had seen those first few days at the elementary level growing compared to what we saw last year, there wasn't that leap at the middle school in these first few days. And ultimately, we're not recommending the, for that full 11. We base it on grade levels.
I'm not sure that answers my question. Practically, though. Because it seems like you've got a, you know, the elementary school, you know, you can say, when you walk in the building, you put on a mask.
Yep.
When you get to middle school, you, seems like you would be saying, these people, you need to put on a mask, but the rest of you don't.
You're right, it's tough. It's tougher.
Can it be done?
Our administrators get to know the children. It could be done, but it's tougher and the logistics of that would be difficult.
Okay, thank you.
We did not recommend, we did not recommend that.
Ms. Cleveland? That was the same question I had. Okay. Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason, just, I made a couple of notes in your opening comments. You said approximately 51% of the county is vaccinated. And then you gave a number of 12 and over that were vaccinated because I guess the 12 and under are part of that first total aggregate number. What is the 12 and over percentage? I think you quoted that.
Approximately 61.
Approximately 61?
And Mr. Anderson may have the, there's probably some decimal places with it around that 61.
And you indicated, I thought also you made a statement that numbers over the past few weeks, I guess, within the county are showing that 12 to 20-year-old, which is kind of what I'm thinking my middle school and high school demographic was also increasing, they were increasing in vaccinations? Or did I misunderstand that?
That's correct. The numbers that we've seen in total vaccinations have grown in that age category faster than the whole. And Ms. Thompson and Mr. Anderson may have some specifics on that. That data is available on the state websites to show it by age grouping. And we pulled the total, we didn't pull the individual, what it is day by day. But the numbers have been increasing every day. They go up a little bit.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I believe that's all of the discussion that we had. So Ms. Abria, will you please restate your amendment? One moment, please. There you go.
I'd like to move that the temporary mask requirement be for anyone age under 12 who doesn't have the choice to be vaccinated yet.
Board members, will you please cast your votes?
Your vote is five yes, five no.
The vote was five yes, five no's. Motion fails, so we're back to the original motion. And Mr. Galbraith, you were up next, followed by Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Am I on you?
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not ready to, not ready to speak to the, to make comments yet, but I do have a few questions for the recommendation and how it intends to be played out. What are the opt-out provisions that you are recommending? Because I'd like to make a couple of amendments later depending upon the answer to these questions.
Last year, we did have medical exemptions and exemptions for religious. We had about 1,500 total at the end of the school year. We expect to still honor those.
So I'll have.
Crowd, excuse me, Mr. Galbraith. We're moving toward the end of this meeting. If everybody can please uphold the behaviors that you've been asked to commit to, thank you.
Okay, I'll have some more comments later, but thank you for that. And what is your, what's your recommendation on the end date to this temporary restriction?
We discussed that possibility. I don't have a particular end date. What we will be doing is monitoring the growth of the cases and the severity. And we would make a recommendation as soon as we believe that the need for the requirement at the elementary schools ended. I will also tell you that you all as board members, you all as board members certainly have that power to put that back on the agenda when you believe. So I would like Mr. Anderson and Ms. Thompson, if there's any other medical specificity related to that answer that you'd like to give.
We're tracking hospitalization. And we're tracking internal positive case reports on a day-to-day basis. And we are currently at the number of positive cases where we were in November, all total being reported. So as for an end date, Gary, do you have any indication?
We haven't decided on any specific end date. And we, when we talked with Superintendent Golden, it was to bring it back as we saw things declining and for the board to vote on at any given time. But we up to looking at all of our numbers and making a decision based on, okay, this is looking a lot better. Similar to what it did during the summer when it dropped down to single digits, and then it rapidly rose in the month of July. So that's why we say we look at each piece of it, and we would come back when we see trending in the right direction and in our county, in our schools.
So if I may, Mr. Galbraith, in the event you all pass this, we may continue, either way, giving you weekly updates to make sure you all have that from us. It takes a lot of time to dig through that data. So I think it's incumbent on us to give you some synopses on a regular basis.
Thank you. A follow-up on the opt-out. Would your recommendation be to to grant, to go ahead and honor the forms from last year and to just require new forms for those who haven't already put them on file?
Yes.
This is an administrative issue?
Yes. To put a little detail on that, somebody had a medical excuse or somebody had a religious exemption. The chances of that having changed is pretty slim.
Okay. Can, what is, what is your, did you discuss, I guess, Mr. Anderson or the three of you? What's going to be the requirements of staff for the elementary school level on your recommendation?
The recommendation includes staff in the buildings. When you're in the elementary, when you're inside the elementary school buildings, those in the buildings would be required to wear a mask.
So there would be no, there would be no opt-out provision for staff?
Oh, I get you.
No, well, it was the second, it was the follow.
Gotcha. Well, there may be a medical need for a teacher or a religious reason as well.
Okay. And. And. Well, I guess that was my, that was going to be my question. So the teachers who got the vaccine under the, not saying they were coerced, but they made adult decisions. No, I'm not. I'm clarifying. They made an adult decision to get vaccinated. But part of their decision-making process was that they wouldn't have to wear a mask and they wouldn't be subject to quarantine. So how will you make any exceptions? Given that the main rationale for this is we're protecting the students who aren't old enough to be vaccinated. If you have people who were and have been given the choice to be vaccinated, are you going to allow them to have the option to not wear the mask?
I would like Ms. Thompson and Mr. Anderson to speak to that, because we did discuss the medical elements of that.
So unfortunately, those that are vaccinated, they are still subject to getting COVID. And so.
I guess.
And I'm not speaking on behalf of anybody getting vaccination or either way. I'm just saying the fact that people who have been vaccinated still are getting COVID.
Ms. Thompson, I guess with all due respect, so are everybody in middle and high school, too.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're, and they're, and we're letting them go and have a choice.
So if I may, the logical, the logical medical question, if I may, with a threshold, and I'm not a medical professional, is, is there any value in, in medical value in those who are vaccinated still wearing masks to protect those, to protect those elementary-age children?
Well, I guess I would add to that. If there's value in that, then there's also value in making everybody wear a mask. Because anybody who's vaccinated can acquire the vaccine or can acquire the virus and spread it. And so we're saying that it's an acceptable risk for the middle and high schoolers. But now, we're, the middle, elementary school teachers who have had the same opportunity to be vaccinated as their counterparts in middle and high school are not being given the choice.
So the CDC, of course, you all heard, came out with universal masking and the Swiss cheese model in learning about masking. And part of the other indication to protect those that are ineligible for vaccination is to in fact have universal masking, which means that both are wearing the mask, both the person that's the positive case and both the person that's exposed. So in order to better protect those that are ineligible for vaccination, it's advised that both be wearing the mask.
Understood. So I would, I guess, I'm going to make my statements now. And then I do have a couple of amendments to offer. But Jason, you said that you were, the CDC guidelines came out in July and were, and you knew those and you were comfortable going with your recommendation for the first day of school. And this special called meeting kind of took you by surprise. And you had to kind of work overtime, work the weekend to come up with your plan, look at the data. And I guess, if you weren't recommended on the, if you weren't recommended then and you, had we not called a special meeting, you wouldn't be making this recommendation now. When would you have come forward with this recommendation for us?
We have on our schedule a work session in two days. And so our projection at the time was, look at those first few days and look at it and have that discussion at the work session. And then presumably have a, if we determined there was a need at that time, have a vote on Monday.
Okay.
So we're two days ahead of the work session, six days ahead of the Monday vote.
And I left out one question, I'm sorry. The seating charts, what is your, what is your plan under this recommendation?
We don't have any plans for seating charts. One of the mitigation strategies that we talked about and included in our original plan that we don't propose change, changes, is maintain three-foot social distancing, if possible. If possible, and if not, cohorts. So as an example, at the elementary school level, some of the classes have tables. Have those children stick to their tables with each other, you know, as much as you possibly can.
Okay. Thank you. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to move to add an expiration date for this temporary restriction to end on the date of our September meeting. I believe it's September 20th, if y'all agree with that.
We have a motion, is there a second? Mr. Cash, seconds? Discussion?
If I may first, to start the discussion. My desire is to, is to not put us in the same position as we were last year when we, when everything was based on judgment. I'd like to, like, you'll be able to know that we're going to talk about this at our next meeting. And it's going to be up on the agenda to either, but it's going to take a positive vote to renew versus a positive vote to cancel. And so I would like to make sure that you are, you're obviously going to be prepared at the next meeting to give us an update. But I want it to, I would like for it to come up on the agenda. Thank you.
So to clarify, end on the date of our September board meeting?
If it's more practical, I would like it to end at midnight on the date of our board meeting. If that's more specific.
Okay.
Of September 20th, right?
Okay, so we have, we have the motion, we have the second. Mr. Mitchell, do you want to speak to this amendment? Got you.
Yeah, I can support this amendment.
Mr. Wimberly?
Yes, can we get a staff recommendation?
If I may, Mr. Wimberly, let me just articulate a thought. So if it automatically sunsets midnight on the 20th, that would require another vote along these same lines. We could live with that.
Ms. Supriya?
So my question was kind of along those lines. Is it better to say that we have it expire? Or just to say that we want to have it on the agenda for a renewal vote every meeting? So we discuss it and do have new data and take another vote?
May I respond? I think she's asking for clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, please.
I guess my request, if it works, if it can get the votes and we all agree, would be for it to expire and us to have to make an affirmative vote. I guess my second amendment, if it fails, is going to be to require a vote in the next period. So it's a nuance, but it requires one more vote to keep it. It requires that a majority want to keep it versus a majority to stop it. And I just, I want to make sure that a majority of the board at the end of our next board meeting wants to keep it going. Right? So, does that make sense?
Yes. Mr. Fiskus?
Just a question of clarity. So you said midnight on September 20th. And so that would be prior, midnight morning, prior to school that day. And so are you talking about 11:59 on September 20?
I'm talking about Monday night. So Tuesday morning, it would.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, oh, Mr. Hall, and then I can't, I can't click myself in, but I want to go after you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So on a practical level, having it expire that night of a board meeting, does that allow for administrative adjustment quickly enough so that the message can get out? Or would it make sense to have that, still with the same intent, but to allow for a practical implementation of a change if that were voted on?
If Mr. Cash agrees, I don't mind, I don't mind admitting to Wednesday night or Tuesday night. If we're saying this would be effective Thursday, give us two days. So it would be, it would essentially be effective on Wednesday, the 22nd. So the mask mandate would end for the school day of, the first school day that it would end for would be Wednesday, September 22nd. Is that fair? Okay. Would you agree to second?
Thank you. And I have a question here. So if, what will be the criteria? So, let me back up here. So we're talking about sunsetting it by a certain date. But how will that practically play out? What if the numbers are still high? And what if there's still a staff recommendation to continue?
Madam Chair, as I understand it, we would have a similar discussion to the discussion we're having tonight, but in the context of the data we have at that time. As Mr. Galbraith said, if this passes tonight, we, he would ask for it to be on the agenda anyway. And we would have that same discussion. If this amendment doesn't pass, then the underlying motion passes. So one of the reasons I said that it'd be fine for us is, either way, it's clear that it's going to be discussed again at the September meeting. Unless we determine there's been, you know, an abrupt drop in the numbers and we make, you know, or whatever, and we make a recommendation in the meantime. So either way, you're going to have this discussion in September, based on what I've heard.
So practically, we go from a sunset to the opportunity to vote on it again at the September meeting.
That's correct.
Mr. Golden?
Yes, ma'am. And Mr. Galbraith articulated in a way that was my take as well, which is, if, you know, the nature of a motion requires a majority. So if a motion is to require something, it takes a majority. If a motion is to end something, that takes a majority as well. So it is, because we have 12 board members, right? Because it's an even number, it does shift for one. So what he, in essence, is saying is that if there's a need to continue it, knowing that he would put it on the agenda for September regardless, it's going to take, it would take a majority. My feeling is that's appropriate for a majority to make that decision.
Okay. And one more question. And you said you could live with that. But what criteria would the staff use to recommend sunsetting?
Thank you. From, well, from a figure of speech, we can live with it. And I was thinking about the logistics of the board dynamics and making decisions. On the medical and practical side of our recommendations, we would look at what we're looking at right now. And Ms. Thompson can fill in any key points I missed. But examples include positive cases in the elementary schools, severity of cases, the, you know, the impact of the virus in the schools during that time, hospitalizations, all those factors that we've considered, those things that we'll be looking at on a regular basis either way to determine if there's a need. You all know that two-plus weeks ago, we looked at the numbers and weren't to the point of recommending it. There's been a quick change. And we, and, you know, now we are. Could there be another quick change? Very likely, very possibly, there could be. And so we will continue to monitor that.
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus.
Just a question of clarity, too. So in that, in that staff recommendation, if we do see a spike in middle schools or high schools, will that take into effect a recommendation for masking at that time?
We will continue to monitor all of this. I will tell you, it's been clear from the medical professionals, from the governor's office, you know, from the state administration, what we've talked about last year, which is our number one is to have students safely on campus. We don't have as many tools in our toolbox this year as we did last year, because the continuous learning plans are gone. And we are factoring that in, we are considering that. Might there come a point where we have to, you know, step up that, the levels, the layers that the CDC talks about? It's possible. So short answer to your question, which I struggle ever giving, is yes.
I see no further discussion. So we have an amendment and a second to sunset this masking criteria on the Wednesday prior to the September board meeting. Is that correct?
Specifically, it would be at midnight on Tuesday, September 21st.
Midnight?
11:59.
Midnight, 11:59, Tuesday, the 21st. I said Wednesday, Wednesday would be the first day of.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
After the board meeting?
The first day, the first day of, if it sunsets, the first day of no mask would be the Wednesday, the 21st.
Following the board meeting.
Following, following the board meeting. Thank you.
If I may, just for clarity purposes, for my purposes, my understanding is what Mr. Galbraith was talking about is, give us a day to communicate before a change.
Okay, a yes vote means you support this amendment. A no vote means you do not support this amendment. Board members, please vote.
Your vote is nine yes, one no?
Okay. So the motion passes? The amendment passes, yes, thank you. Now we're back to the original motion? We're back to the original motion as amended. Mr. Fiskus? Get back in line, please. Mr. Fiskus?
So for clarity, are we back on the first recommendation? Elementary masking? Okay. So I just had a question. How will this play out? It may be a question for Dr. Oyer, Dr. Golden, Mr. Golden, at our K-8 school, Hillsboro. How will we play that out there if we're masking elementary?
Thank you. I would like, I would like actually Ms. Thompson to speak to that. We've had that discussion in details. Ms. Thompson?
We started with a discussion with the principal. Are we capable of separating these two age groups? And he has confirmed with me that we are able to, in fact, separate them even though they are within the same building so that we can, in fact, keep universal masking as proposed with elementary.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Gal, no, Ms. Cleveland.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. And I believe she's no longer there. But a good question that I forgot to ask this last time. Teachers in elementary school. I know we have vaccinated teachers. And I know how important it is for the elementary school kids to be able to see the mouths of the teachers. And so is there a way? I don't know if there's a way we can say the vaccinated teachers? Because this is what I envision. The teachers are in front of the classroom, they're six feet away, they're not near the students at all. And the students are already masked. And so is there a way they can teach the kids without the mask? And if they are going to start walking around the room and, you know, monitoring the kids? working with the kids, they can put the mask on. But when they're in front, actually teaching, is there a possibility of them not having to wear the mask?
I would like Ms. Thompson to speak to that as well. That is one of those topics that we discussed.
In practical purposes, yes. It's easy to say, if you're outside of the six-feet circle, to apply that, then the teachers, yes. And we ask that they would put on their mask when they are working directly with the students, within that space.
Thank you very much. Good. And then clarify that in elementary school, when the kids are outside, no mask?
That is correct. The, all the guidelines we've seen, it makes it clear that this is inside the building. So that, that's the recommendation and the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you. And my last one, this is just my suggestion. I like how last year, we went school by school. And rather than, I know we have county numbers, we have state numbers. But I think what kept our schools open last year was we went school by school numbers. So I know we do have to look at state, we do look, have to look at local numbers. But I think we need to focus just on the school numbers, and then that will determine how we deal with this in the future. And that's just my recommendation.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Haw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great questions and really good discussion. I'm, I'm really surprised to be in this situation. Three months ago, this was unfathomable. I thought we were out of this. I'm not where I was three weeks ago in thinking about this. But, you know, it's, it's just getting more concerning. This, this variant, and the rate of spread, and the impact that we're hearing to the kids, there's a lot of unknowns there. And I hope everybody can appreciate the fact that we've received hundreds and hundreds of emails. And thank you all for being so passionate about your kids and what you care about. We were, at, at one point, it was two a minute that were coming in. And they're very much on both sides of this issue. You have neighbors and friends who feel totally differently than, than you do, all of us do. And, and it's, it's hard to find a middle ground on something like this. You're either wearing a mask or you're not. It's really hard. But we, we, we have a social contract, too. We don't, we don't send our kids to school when they're sick. We don't send them there when they have a fever. And, and this is on that continuum of making sure that our neighbors and our kids are healthy. Some parents are terrified. New kindergarten parents do not want to send their kids into an environment that they feel may be transmitting the Delta variant. It's super concerning. And, and to tell them, to tell them to stay home, to, to tell them to stay home flies in the face of so much of what we heard last year, where people were legitimately saying, "You've got to be in school." That's so important for those kids to be in school. We want kids to stay in school. Masking up may help to mitigate that. No one, no one says the masks are a cure-all. It's not perfect. This is mitigation. And it's, it's very difficult to, to kind of have those public policy discussions when it's not a completely coherent...
Excuse me, deputy, Deputy Hellstrom. I cannot see from my perspective who keeps speaking out, but could you keep an eye on that for me, please? Thank you.
There's, there's not going to be a policy that makes complete sense to everyone. That's impossible in this situation. And I appreciate the frustration with this. But I, I hope that people would be kind and empathetic to those who disagree and feel otherwise. This is a time to let your voices heard, and we have heard you so loud and clear in emails outside, in this, in this room. And I hope that in a month, in two months, we're not talking about masks, and we're back to where we were in, in May. But there are a lot of long-term COVID cases that are, that are very concerning. And I wouldn't wish that on anybody. And I wouldn't want to be partially responsible for that happening to any kid in this community. And, and it's, it's hard. And, and Dan, I, I appreciate what you said. We had a plan, and then this happened. And it's, it's hard to make a plan that lasts and, and doesn't change. But the situation has changed. And, and I appreciate that we're going to have continued discussions, that we've got benchmarks in place to have those discussions, to force us to be accountable and look at what we're doing to make sure that it still makes sense. And to those folks who have said, "A cloth napkin on your face doesn't work, you should be wearing PPE," well, that's good advice. I think that, that, I, I think that represents a bit of a shift in thinking to where we're hearing that from people who are not in favor of a masking policy. It's a tacit endorsement for the idea that some masks can help prevent this. And I would like us to do more of that and put that in some of our materials. For those folks who are on board with masking, let's work harder to say, "Here's what's effective. Here's how to wear them effectively. Here are the types that work effectively." They may not be very attractive or cute, but they may do a better job than the cloth masks that are in place. So there's a lot to consider here. I appreciate the discussion. I'm in favor of what's being proposed.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I, I didn't understand, or maybe I didn't hear clearly what Ms. Thompson said. Was, was the, the protocol for, and I don't know if this is in the, if it's necessary to be in, in the policy or not, or in, in our recommendation, but is the protocol that if a teacher is safely distanced, then they may take off their mask when teaching their classroom?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I would like to, I would like to make this part of, just a clarification of the, of the motion. And it's two parts. One, first, that teachers who are safely distanced, do I have to define that as six feet or three feet, or is safely distanced appropriate? I just want to, I want to codify what the procedure is in the, in the recommendation.
I would say six feet. I originally used to say healthy distance to promote people to make the choice, but I've come to see that they might need a little bit more information to be able to safely make that decision.
So I'll abide by your recommendation. So that teachers who are safely distanced, parentheses, at least six feet, may remove their mask indoors, and to grandfather exemptions from 2021, as Mr. Golden said, and allow students, allow staff and students to opt out of the mask mandate.
Would you please repeat that?
Yes. First, teachers safely distanced at least six feet may remove their mask indoors. I don't, I'm not even sure I need the indoors. May remove their mask, period. And grandfather exemptions for 20, from 2020, 2021, and allow staff and students to opt out of the mask mandate.
If I may, Madam, if I may, Madam Chair, for clarification, that last phrase, allow students to opt out.
Yes.
Are you referring to the same exemption protocols we had last year?
I'm, I'm actually not, if I, if I would, if I'm making a proposal. I would, I would prefer to go, I, I believe there's a Miami or somewhere that has done a similar, a similar proposal. And, and I would, I would like to not require people, the, the medical, the medical exemptions were a bit of a hit or miss last year, and nobody really understood why some of them were approved and some of them weren't. And then, so then you're, the only, the only choice that you're giving parents is then to file a religious exemption. And some people did not file the exemption because they felt uncomfortable filing the religious exemption. But those religious exemptions were not, were not unduly turned down at all, right? And so, so for, so effectively, we're, we're allowing people to opt out if they really, really don't want to. And we're making them sign a religious exemption to say that they, that they have a religious reason. And I'm just asking that we allow them. I think what you're going to see is, is half the people are not going to, half the people are just going to go with the flow and do it. It's not going to be 73% that, that are not masked. It will be more than 1,500. Well, I know 1,500 includes non elementary school students as well. But that would be my, that would be my expectation of how that would work. So I would love to get your thoughts on that.
Yes, Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Cook, is that a proper motion?
Unfortunately, it is not. What you've got is two different motions. The first one was, was okay. The second one basically defeats the main motion. Because what the main motion is mandatory mask. Now you're making a motion where that's now no longer mandatory. So that second motion defeats the actual main motion, so you're not, it's not permissible. Now your first motion...
I, I got a question about that.
Sure.
Mister, which part, so, so you're saying the option to get an exemption makes the mandatory nature of that go away?
Sir, the exemptions are basically by law. So the religion, the health thing, those are also issues, other issues with the law, which I understand your motion was, is that if you didn't want to comply with it, then you didn't have to get an exemption, you just didn't have to comply with it.
It means that it's mandated unless you opt out. So by, by default, you have to, you have to wear the mask unless you, unless you opt out, in which case you don't have to wear the mask. Right now, so my preference would be that we offer you a choice, and you could wear it or not, right? My, my, I'm trying to, I'm trying to recognize that there's 1,000 people outside. Right? And so I'm, what I'm try, what I'm trying to do, I'm, I'm actually trying to keep us from legal action and give people an out so that we don't force them into their only option being litigation.
And again, the motion is improper. I'm sorry.
The motion is improper?
That's correct, because your motion will still defeat the main motion. You asked for a point of order. That's my ruling.
So, Mr. Golden, your legal opinion, do you agree with that?
I mean, I can't give you my legal opinion, but as I understood your motion, our, the, the motion on the floor and our recommendation was to require masks at the elementary level. And you've clarified that we would still honor those exemptions of health and, and, and religion. We still intend to do that.
Right.
My understanding of what you've described is, we would require them, but not require them by having the opt-out.
We would require them, but would, would, we would not require them for the people who requested the, the opt-out?
For my, for my purposes, if, if we believed that the appropriate thing at the elementary level was for it to be exclusively a mask optional, we would not have brought this recommendation to you. So I can say, based on the way you, you've, you've worded that, I would not recommend approval of that, with, with the caveat that we are going to honor medical, we are going to honor religious exemptions, and what Ms. Thompson said about teachers and their, their capacity to do that as needed.
Okay. So I, I completely, respectfully, I completely disagree. But I will, I will amend my motion. I will amend my amendment to, to say, for that section, to grandfather exemptions from 2020, 21, and allow staff and students to request, some, request similar exemptions. Is that okay? Is that a proper motion?
I mean, if you're going to be making it just for a point of clarification, you're making the exemptions based on those that have already been approved of grandfather.
Grandfather, and, well, and I'm, but I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking to continue that same policy for staff and students to honor the, the same procedure.
So that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Mr. Cash, seconds. So let me, let me note the discussion that we're, the order of the discussion here. Okay. Any discussion on this motion? Mr. Wimberly, is your question about the, the amended motion? Okay, just a second. Mr. Cash, is your question about the? Okay. All right. Ms. Priya, will you? Please go ahead. One moment, please. There you go.
Okay. So Jay, just to clarify, we're saying grandfathering in all the ones from last year, so they carry over to this year. And then also opening the exemptions back up the same way we had them last year, so that new people can do it again the same way this year. Okay. Thank you.
Who's next? Mr. Fiskus?
So, Mr. Golden, was your statement that this, would this amendment need, we need to make? Come on. Mr. Golden, would this amendment need to be made even since we've already, you've already stated that those exemptions are going to be accepted and then other ex, the same practice? And, and Mr. Cook, you said it's by law. Is that correct?
There are certain exemptions that are by law.
I, I'm, I don't, from a, from a chief administrator's perspective, I didn't see the need, but I certainly respect it, and I'd be fine with you all voting for it. It institutionalizes from the board that. I'm fine with it.
Can I ask one more question that was about the instruction part? Is that, is that going to be a separate motion? Or is that already something that was a part of what we've discussed about teachers and masking? Was, he had initially started that as part of this motion?
It was, it's all included.
It's included in this motion?
The distancing, the grandfathering, and the, and the new exemptions. It's three parts.
Yes. Ms. Priya?
So, okay, so we're voting?
Wait for your mask. I'll wait.
Motion on the table is to amend the current recommendation, to add the exemption stuff that we just talked about, plus also, the teachers may remove their masks when they are appropriately distanced at the front of the classroom.
And I think it's, I think it's just clarifying what, what the, the procedure that was going to be followed.
Okay.
I'm just trying to put it...
Okay. So the procedure that we're clarifying, did that include vaccinated teachers only, or all teachers? Jason?
It's all. It's both.
All teachers, once they're distanced, can remove their masks? Indoors? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Wimberly?
Who is documenting this motion? And could it be read back to us?
I, I will answer that.
No, I don't think it's you, Jay.
I will answer that. Ms. Glenn is actually documenting.
Oh, no. Sorry, Lynn.
And by the way, we actually sometimes go back and double-check when, the video.
Thank you.
Well, I want to hear it before I vote.
Yeah, pull your microphone, please.
So all teachers who are safely distanced at least six feet may remove their mask, part one. Part two is, we will grandfather in exemptions from 2020, 21 school year. Part three is allow staff and students to exempt with the same, and I'm really not sure what word, the same?
Exemptions.
Same exemptions? Okay.
Set of exemptions.
Same set of exemptions?
Can't you name the extensions? It's for...
Health and religion.
Yeah, health and religion.
Same exemptions for medic, for medical and religious purposes.
Staff and students to, and allow staff and students to exempt with the same set of exemptions, religious and health, health and religious. Okay?
Mr. Cash?
Is this the final? Is this the final chance to speak?
Not yet.
Well, that, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Haw?
Okay. In this recommendation within this amendment, or, I'm sorry, within this amendment, the nuanced part about teachers removing masks in front of the class, I like that a lot. I think that seeing the vocalization is important. And I, I thought we were already doing some of that last year, but this kind of, kind of gives more license perhaps to do so. But do you have a feeling that parents, who may be apprehensive about this environment, will be concerned that that gives some teachers... will be concerned that that gives some teachers, you know, that it may be unmanageable, and some teachers just may be unmasked all the time despite these kind of, these are very difficult guidelines to enforce in a classroom, I would imagine, for principals. How does that work, and is it really doable?
It increases the burden on teachers and administrators. It does. I will tell you, through this pandemic, even dating back to last year, we did a lot of things that increased the burden because it was best for students. And so, yes, it will, it will be more difficult, there, there will be some imperfections, but based on what Ms. Thompson said, I've concluded it's worth that effort.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Golden, I have a question. As, you know, trying to think of, of all the questions that were brought to us last year, there was a good bit of community concern about people, you know, laughing and joking about fraudulent exemptions. So, I think, you know, parents need to know that even though there is a mask mandate, that, that there are some instances where, where people have asked for them and kind of joked around about how easy it was to get, and, you know, just ask for it this way, et cetera. I guess that kind of gets back to what Mr. Haw talked about, is the collective good and, and doing good for everyone. But we get asked a lot, what, what recourse is there if someone submits a false, a false form? So can you please address that?
Sure, and I actually may invite Mr. Cook, if, if he deems it appropriate on the, on the legal side. We, we, we do have that concern, but, uh, we, we operate under the assumption that our families act in good faith, and we honor that. We had about 1,500 total last year. I'm thinking it was maybe 60-40, religion to health, something like that. We have had, we did get some of that criticism, you know, people would say things like, they just now got their religious exemption, I wonder what, why they didn't have that, those religious thoughts, you know, for a blank number of, of months. I will tell you that my conclusion related to that is, well, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna speak to my understanding first of, of, of the rules governing us, and then speak to my conclusion. The rules governing us, it is not appropriate for us to ask questions about their reasons by, by, by virtue of the Bill of Rights. It's in essence, all or nothing. There, there's the potential that in certain situations, a, a school board might have the power to just completely say, no religious exemptions. There's a potential for that. My conclusion is, whether somebody's not telling the truth or not, I believe at least some, or perhaps all, some number are telling the truth, and I want to make sure we honor that because we are government.
Thank you. Mr. Fiskus?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment to this motion, if possible, in regards to the, in regards to the teacher distance from the cla, in the front of the classroom. I think it's important, as Mr. Haw said, and Mr. Galbraith is alluding to, that, that children be able to see their teachers' faces as they're working through phonics and, and communication and so on. I do have some concern around, because of the numbers and because of the, the conversation that we've had, that a teacher would be able to just be freely in front of the classroom without a mask. And so my amendment would ask that a teacher must wear a mask or a face shield, a clear face shield, when teaching in front of the classroom. So, so that way, there is some level of protection there, and students can still see those students, or those teachers' expressions.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Ms. Priya, seconds. Any discussion? Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Mr. Fiskus. I, I guess my, the entirety of my amendment is, is to reflect procedures that were already in place, and so, what you're, what you're asking for is an additional restriction that wasn't recommended by, by the superintendent. And so, I don't wanna put, I don't wanna put addition, I, I don't, but the purpose of my amendment was not to put additional restrictions on our, on our staff that weren't there before. So, so, I mean, I, I respect the, I respect the ask, but that's, that's why I, I'll, I'll, I'd like to just keep it as is.
Mr. Wimberly?
I apologize for being so dense, but Lydia, could you read the part about the teachers? Back to me.
Jay's motion or Brad's amendment?
Uh, Jay's motion. Wait a minute, can I do that?
Yes.
Okay. And, and I'll tell you why. If the board chooses to specify that teachers may only remove their mask when there's six feet distance, six feet, is that right? And speaking to the class, to me, that seems more restrictive, because, you know, there are gonna be other times when they ought to be able to remove their mask. And I'm thinking, there are no kids in the classroom? So that's really what I'm wondering, is the, when they're speaking to the class part. Does that make sense? I think, you know, we may, may be an unintended consequence that we're making it more restrictive, because then our administrators are saying to teachers, you must wear those masks at all times when you're in the building, unless you're speaking to a crowd of kids with six feet distance. Have I misunderstood what, what we're voting on?
If I, if I may, Ms. Glenn, was there an only in that? How, how was that worded?
For Brad's?
For Ms., for Mr. Galbraith's.
For Mr. Galbraith, I have, teachers who are safely distanced at least, at least six feet may remove their mask.
Thank you.
I, I think that takes care of it.
Yeah. Is that better?
Yeah, speaking before the class, you know, through me. Sorry.
Ms., Ms. Emerson?
Thank you. I, this just frustrates me two pieces. I taught kindergarten and first grade for over 20 years, and I'm telling you what, I would have a very difficult time being able to do the things that I was not only capable of, but I was so blessed to experience with my class, if I have to look and think, I'm six feet away, and that's the only way I can be. I had kids in my lap all over, kids, especially kindergarten, first grade, need physical touch. They need to see you. You do not push them away. And to, I mean, this is a distance to me. I mean, people know me, I am a very touchy kind of a gal. I want to be, I want to be in the presence of, I don't wanna be across the room. And I think mandating this is just, to me, sinful. It is making me absolutely crazy. Who are we to, to tell teachers who have trained, spent thousands of dollars and many hours in the classroom themselves to be able to teach? And as I said, I have over 20 years of experience as a master, a master degree teacher. And I, the things that are going on here are making me absolutely crazy. We've lost all sensibility.
I believe we're voting on an amendment?
To the amendments.
Absolutely not.
We're voting on Brad's amendment, that's correct.
Please vote no.
Is it, is my, is my amendment appropriate, or, or not?
Your amendment's appropriate if you're amending his. All you're doing is just amending his, you're not doing with any of his motion, so it is still a proper motion.
He's adding the face shield, though.
If they, if they remove their mask and that, that face shield, so that they can then be possibly engage in closer contact.
So, Madam Chair, if I'm, if I may, if I may, just, just for Claride's purpose, and, and ask Ms. Glenn to, to correct me if this is inaccurate. Mr. Fiskus is making a, has made a motion to amend the, the motion to amend. His amendment that you all are voting on is whether to substitute face shields for no mask in the teacher context of Mr. Galbraith's motion.
That is how I check it, yes, sir.
That's how I do it. Do you want to argue?
Mr. Cook? I have, we have, we're about to vote, but I have another person.
Asking for the motion.
Ms. Emerson, is your comment for the, for the motion on the floor?
I want to say that that is not-
Ms., Ms. Emerson, is your, is your comment on Mr. Fiskus' motion?
Probably, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I, I think we are getting into areas, and Brad, you have just done it, that you have no business in, in, in coming into. Some of the things that you are, are, I am sorry, I'm so upset about this, having, I loved what I did. I love children, I love people. We are just dividing everybody from one another with all of these mandates and things that we have. Please, please don't do this. You've got teachers that are trained, that know what to do, they are never, ever gonna put those children in harm's way. They are never gonna do anything in their classroom that is gonna compromise their education, their health, their love of school. Please don't do this. We, we have gotten way off base treading in this water. Please don't do this.
Mr. Fiskus?
Madam Chair, and so, my response, I was also a teacher. I taught for 13 years, both middle school and high school. I was a very interactive teacher, and if I were teaching today, I would ask to wear a face shield so that I could teach and be interactive. Let me speak. The virus doesn't care whether they want to not harm their student or not. The virus goes to where there's a host that can receive that virus. And so our children are acceptable hosts. And so that's my concern. I was a biology teacher, I know all about how viruses mutate. And so that's the reason for this amendment, not to add more restrictions, to actually provide more freedom for them to be able to speak and teach in a classroom.
Ms. Emerson?
We already are losing good teachers.
Ms. Emerson?
You, you were not trained to teach in a kindergarten, first grade, lower elementary school. You, I know, were fabulous at what you did. You loved your teaching career, and you did a fabulous job, but you didn't teach with little people. You've got little babies, kindergartners and first graders, when they come into your room, they're away from their parents, they're away from their environment, they're nervous, they're scared. You need to create a bond where when they walk in that door in the morning, they are so excited to see you, they can't wait to get started with teaching.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Fiskus, if I may. Would it, would it be acceptable to, for your, for your motion, to, to say that teachers would be given, let me re, let me rephrase my, my thing to see if it would fit. Teachers would be given the option to wear a face shield or a face covering? But my, my amendment would still, would still read, but they can remove, they can, they can remove both if they're more than six feet away. So I, I appreciate your, I, right now, I don't believe, if, if I can, if I can ask Mr. Golden or Ms. Thompson, is a teacher able to wear a face shield instead of a face covering, walking around the building in proximity with, with children?
We have made some medical exceptions for that, but the, the face, the face mask is the, has, has been the standard.
So, Mr. Fiskus, it's, it's up, it's up to you. I'm just, that would, I would be willing to, to amend mine if that was agreeable to you, but if it's not, if it changes the nature of your motion, I'm fine.
I agree.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, just to, so that, so it's on the record, I, I know that Mr. Fiskus' microphone was not on.
Uh, yes, I agree to that, to that friendly amendment, to my amendment.
So, if I, if I may, Ms. Glenn?
No.
I'm sorry.
What, what you wanna do is, because what he's gonna end doing is covering your amendment, so you wanna withdraw your amendment, the second needs to withdraw, and then we are back to you.
Thanks.
All right, so, Ms. Priya agrees, I'll withdraw my amendment to go back to Mr.-
Galbraith's statement about adding face shields as an option.
Ms. Glenn, did you get that, or do you want me to repeat it?
Let's see. Teachers will be given the option for a face covering or face shield. Are we keeping the-
They remove both.
And may remove both when they are safely distanced at least feet, at least six feet?
Yes.
I, I wanna try to say this again. Teachers who are safely distanced at least, at least six feet may remove their mask or face shield.
Well, I think, I think I'd like it to-
The first one?
I wanna, I wanna state that they-
Okay.
Either wear a face covering or face shield, and they may remove them when they are safely distanced at at least six feet.
Okay.
Do they wear- Does that mean all the time?
Well, Madam Chair, I, I'll, I'll let the motion stand as is, 'cause it's the intent of, of, of Mr. Galbraith. As I understand part of what he's, he's saying, it's a shift for teachers from mask to mask or face shields. We have, we have had some teachers wear face shields in lieu of a mask based on a medical need, not that, you know, for the, for breathing purposes. But as I understand his motion now, it, it, it's, it, it stretches or changes the mask requirement to a mask or face shield requirement.
For, for teachers.
For teachers.
Ms. Emerson, is your comment on this?
Uh, it's about the distancing.
Okay.
Six feet. I, I mean, are we measuring now? I mean, I just, I think we've gotten absolutely, I, I, I think we don't need to put six feet. I think if I'm a teacher and I've got kids in my class in front of me, I recognize that, given this environment, we don't want to be too close, we don't wanna create problems with germs or illness or anything else. But I'm not six feet from Sheila, and I feel very comfortable here, and I am not in her face, but this is not six feet. And I think saying six feet is just, we're getting so, you know, politic about things. We're talking about people here and classrooms, especially students and teachers who are, you know, it, it's a little different than being in an office building, where you're in a, your own little box and cage, and you can do whatever you wanna do. But when you're in a classroom and you're teaching, it's got to be intimate, it's got to be where you can communicate closely with the people that are around you. I'm not even six feet from Jay. And, and I think to mandate a, a, a number in terms, just a safe distance, can't we give the teachers credit for deciding what is a safe distance?
Mr. Fiskus?
Uh, Mr. Galbraith, thank you for your interpretation, but that is not what I intended. What I intended was that they have the option, as you said, to remove their mask, and, and if they so choose, that a face shield is, is provided for them to wear, so, because I will tell you, I have a child who is starting college on Monday, and is completely freaked out by the, by the idea that she's gonna be in a classroom with others who may not be vaccinated and who may not be wearing masks.
Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I, I was not done speaking, but I was rudely interrupted.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I was not, I was done, I stopped speaking because I was rudely interrupted, because they were making fun of my child, and I am tired of it.
Mr., Mr. Fiskus?
I'm, I'm just, I'm fine, I'm gonna keep my, my temper here. But my intention was, is that I- But my intention was, is that I, I do believe that teachers need to have, especially those early elementary teachers, need to have that facial expression contact. But I also, I'm not comfortable with not knowing the vaccination status of every teacher of saying, let's just remove the mask. Madam Chair, I'm, I put up with this all evening, we all have, I would ask that you do something. I signed up for decorum, also in public discussion. And so that's, so that's, that's my statement about, about the shields and the mask. It was not to be a and/or belief. They can choose to wear a shield or they can choose to wear a mask and remove either one. It was to provide the option of a, of a shield in that circumstance.
So I'm going to, that's, just want to make sure that we're all, as we're stacking these things and unwinding these things, we all kind of know where we're at in the whole single motion. So with that, let me, Jay, I have the floor. So with that, I'm going to quit. That's all I really wanted to say, was just kind of reset where we were after this step in and step out, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you. So did I rescind my amended motion and we're back to the original? So face masks are gone?
We're back to your original motion.
Original motion, okay, thank you.
Original amendment.
Original amended motion, yes.
And I see no further discussion. So Ms. Glenn, will you please read that one more time for clarity?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Part one, all teachers who are safely distant at least six feet may remove their mask. Part two, we will grandfather exemptions from the school year 2020 to 2021. And part three, allow staff and students to exempt with the same set of exemptions, religion and health.
Board members, a yes vote means you accept this amendment, a no vote means you're voting against it. Please cast your votes.
Your vote is seven yes, three no?
Thank you. Now we're moving back to the original motion. And I had in the queue, Mr. Haw, did you make your, okay, okay, Mr. Galbraith, oh, excuse me, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a couple of questions and then I'll, I'll make my, my comment. Jason, can you state, and I, and I guess, real quick, did, did the recommendation include central office staff and other non-school facilities?
Anyone going into an elementary school, that's, that's our recommendation. So if central office staff goes into the elementary school, they must wear a mask.
So it's not pertaining to staff inside of central office?
That's correct. It's, it's, it's elementary schools based on our health professionals referencing those unable to have access to the vaccine at all, all those other bases.
Okay, can you give me your guidance on whether you're going to, where, where you are on requiring masks for non-school staff? In other words, central office, professional development center, things of that?
At this, at this stage, I am not recommending that we require that based on the conversations we had and recommendations from our health staff. Now, I will tell you, we are still applying some of those principles that we talked about with our mitigation strategies of maintaining social distancing. So we're going back to revisit how to be as wise as we can with central office. But our proposal here is based largely on those who cannot get vaccinated at those, at the, at the ages, you know, at the elementary ages.
Do you have some, do you have some metrics in mind or thresholds in mind on where, on what might move you to require masking within the facilities that are predominantly adult or exclusively adults, I guess, for that?
We are, we are, we are continuing to strongly recommend that. I've given advice, that is, if somebody's, if somebody that you're speaking with is wearing a mask, consider wearing a mask. If you're going to be close, closer to six feet, consider wearing a mask. From a metric, a community metric, we do not have a community metric per se that we're, that we're treating as an end-all be-all, but we are having regular conversations about the progress of the virus in that context as well.
And it's my belief, and maybe Mr. Cook can, can, or, or, Madam Chair, you might be able to answer this, that it's Jason's prerogative and Jason's ability to set that as a requirement for the adult, the adult, the adult facilities, in other words, like central office facilities. Can I, I guess, Mr. Cook, maybe you don't, you're not familiar enough with our policies or not to be able to answer that, maybe I'll, I'll throw that out to my colleagues or if not. And maybe you can ask, maybe you can go and get me that answer for Thursday night.
We'll get you that answer.
Okay. Last, so my, my comments then is, is I, I appreciate the, my colleagues here and your deliberative nature. You know, this has been painful, to say the least, but I feel like that we have demonstrated that we come at these things with, with sincerity and, and genuine curiosity around what each of us feel and think. And that, and that we have a, we have a, I believe, an intelligent give and take on it. And for that, I appreciate what you do, and I thank you for, for your guidance to me and your opinions as we try to wade through a very difficult public health crisis. Thank you.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Please don't hate me. Can I make, based on, based on the comment, would it be appropriate to make an editorial change just because of, of something that, that you said about, about non-teachers? I think specifically I said teachers in my, in my motion. Would it be appropriate for, to, to, to change that to staff?
If I may, Mr. Galbraith?
In the buildings?
We'll apply that principle to staff as well.
Okay, that's fair. I, I know, you, you don't have to, I, I, if you could, and in your communication, could you please communicate that? That was, it was my oversight, but thank you for not having to go through, open up the floor again. So, and, and I, and I really apologize. My intention was to, was to talk through all these things since, you know, in the time period before, since Friday, and these have been on my mind, and I, and forgive us, everybody watching, for the soshas making here, but these are, this is the kind of deliberation we would usually do in policy meeting, and we're combining policy meeting and work session and board meetings, so this is just the, the process that we have to go through. In light of changing the, changing my motion back to not include face masks, I really would, I, I want, I want to know everybody's opinion, and I'm going to offer this amendment to, to change the, and, and I don't know if this is a change in motion or not, but, but the, the mandate would essentially be a, a face covering or a face shield throughout the, for, for the, for the mandate. I don't remember the, I don't remember the wording of our original motion, but.
You mean for the original motion?
For the original motion, yes.
You want to change it to a face covering?
A face covering or a face shield for? It's an, it's a, it is an amendment to the original motion.
Do we have a second?
Right, right. Right now, right now, it's a.
Mr. Cash, what, please, yeah?
Right now, it's a, right now, it's a face covering. So a surgical mask or a cloth face covering? And I'm, I'm, I'm asking that it be a face cover, it, it would still be a face covering, but that would include a face shield as an option, because it's, it's only, like, to Jason's point, only, we only have offered those face coverings to medical exemptions, right? So I'm opening up for teachers and student, and for staff and students to be able to have a face covering which includes a face shield. Yes, students too. That's my, that's my request. This is an amendment to the, to Rick's original motion.
Mr. Cook, would you please comment?
He's just making a amendment to the actual motion that's still on the table. Whether it's needed is, is a procedural question. I'm not sure it's actually needed, but that would be up to Jason.
I will say, Madam Chair, based on our recommendation of a mask in the CDC guidelines, that's a proper motion because we, we're talking mask at this stage.
But what is the staff recommendation?
Oh, I've got to defer to, to Ms. Thompson. We hadn't, we've, we've, we've worked off the CDC guidelines and mask, and it's been, it's been some months since we've spoken to face shields. I know where, where we were then, I just want to do a double check.
Yeah, the CDC has not changed their indication about, the, the face shield is only used when somebody medically cannot wear the face mask. And so interchangeably, our advice and recommendation has always been, the mask is a better form of protection.
So based on that, Madam Chair, for this motion is amended with it set to expire in August, I mean, September 21st, I do not recommend approval of this amendment.
Mr. Haw?
May I start the discussion, please?
So, we have?
Got a motion and a second?
And Mr. Haw was first?
It was my motion.
He can make the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, who made the second? I'm sorry.
Mr. Cash.
Okay, you did the second, okay.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you. So to, to that point, I, so I appreciate the, the, the recommendation, and I, my, my intent was, we never get to discuss all these things, my, I want to, I want to see where you guys, I know, I know where, I know where the health professionals are, and I, and I completely appreciate that. So I just, this is my opportunity to, to get the board member buy-in, so.
Mr. Haw?
So my question was too about the efficacy of face shields. I, my impression was that they, you know, with aerosol-borne pathogen and virus, that they were not particularly effective, so I, I would not be in favor of kind of doing that on the fly in this situation and just sticking with the current protocol that we have in place.
I see no further discussion. We can move for a vote on the amendment. Ms. Glenn, would you please read the amendment?
The amendment part one.
Excuse me. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The amendment part one, teachers who are safely distanced at.
We've done that one. This is, this is to.
To add face shields to the, to mask, to say, mask or face shields.
So, Ms. Glenn, if I may, the, the original, the original motion that Rick made.
I'm, oh, I apologize.
So if you could, could you read the original motion that Rick made? And then I'll tell you the precise, yeah?
I apologize.
This one?
To require masks for students, staff and visitors at the elementary grade levels inside all buildings and buses, effective Tuesday, August the 12th, 2021, and to end on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 11:59 PM.
So my amendment would be to just say, require mask or face shields?
Mask or face shields. Okay, so would you like me to reread?
Oh, I think it, I think it was everybody, right? It was everybody in the building.
The, the original amendment.
But yes, I was, this is for everybody.
And if I may, that, that included for students, staff and visitors?
Yes.
That's the, that's the language.
Yes, sir. So to require masks or face shields for students, staff and visitors at the elementary grade levels inside all buildings and buses, effective Thursday, August the 12th, 2021, and to end on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 11:59 PM.
And staff recommendation?
Do not recommend approval of that amendment.
So board members, a yes vote means you approve, a no vote means you do not approve. Please vote.
Your vote is three yes, seven no?
So the motion failed, so now we are back to the original motion. Is there, are there any people who want to speak here? I'm having a little malfunction here.
I will do.
So I, I also want to speak. Mr. Galbraith, go ahead, please.
You, you may speak first unless you want to close. I'm not going to offer any more amendments if that makes you feel any better.
Then you can speak first.
Okay, thank you. Y'all are all welcome. So, okay, so I didn't, I didn't know if I, I didn't know how this was going to work, if I didn't know if I was going to be able to get all my amendments taken care of in one speaking or not. So, so now's the time for my comments. I know y'all have been waiting for me to talk. So I just want to point out, first of all, Franklin Special School District, who is only K through eight, made the decision last night, I believe, at their, at their board member, at their board meeting, to, to not move forward with any restrictions. So they basically look exactly like we did this week. And presently, the only place in the county that our students are going to be required to wear a face mask is at school. And so they're going to go off and they're going to leave, and they're going to be able to go about their day and go to Chick-fil-A and play on the playground inside and do everything that they want to do. And I'm just, I'm appreciative of, of the amendments that we made, I really am. I'm trying to, trying to make lemonade up here, but we're, I mean, I just know that we've got thousands of people that are, are not going to be terribly happy with this, with this vote, and I, and I completely respect people on, on both sides of the spectrum, and I'm, really am trying to, to come up with a, with a solution that works for, for everybody. So I really appreciate you guys working with me and, and talking through these things. But, I mean, just, I want to, I want to just make sure that we're, that we're cognizant of, of our, of our mission, and I apologize, my screen has timed out a little bit, but let's go back, when I go back to our, ah, I can't find it, sorry. Our mission statement basically talks about, I remember in our strategy meetings, we talked about the whole child, the, the term whole child didn't actually, didn't actually make it in the, in the strategy, but the whole, the, the social, emotional health of, of students was, was definitely front and center in that, in that mission statement. I, I did find it. So we exist, our mission, we exist to provide all students with a quality education, supports their intellectual, physical, emotional and social development. We're, we're failing their emotional development. We are. I mean, we're, we're singularly focused on the, on killing this virus, and we're, we're falling prey to, to the public health perception of our elementary schools as the place where the single greatest number of unvaccinated people are gathering on a daily basis. daily basis in close proximity. And that poses a, we're, we're telling them that, that that, that the nature of our schools is posing a threat to the community spread. And I think it's awful. Like, we, we, we don't. I promise, I'm not, I'm not seeking applause. I, I could, I'm just, I'm just speaking from the heart and thinking, and I, I've seen what this is doing to our kids. Our mental health professionals have months of, of waiting times to get in. And there's no way that these medical doctors that are talking about how they don't, they might not see any, maybe they're not dermatologists, but they're, they might not be seeing the, the physical attributes of, of this, of this disease and the manifestation of, of this masking. But goodness, five-year-olds need to see faces. I mean, I don't know how you learn phonics through a mask. I really, really don't. And so, so I, I, I hope, I hope you can figure out a way to, to provide the face shields. But if not, I appreciate the ability to, to take off the mask when they're, when they're distant. So, I mean, all these things incrementally are, are, are better than, I think we've made this, made this better. I mean, I still can't support, I can't, I, I appreciate the ability for, for you guys to make this more palatable for me, but I just can't support it. I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's the right thing. I think it's going to pass. I, you know, but I've tried, and, and in that case, I think I've made it as, as good as, as I can get it. So, but thank you for, for help, for letting me ramble and talk and, and take up so much of your time.
Thank you, Mr. Galbraith.
There's no amendment.
Mr. Wimberly?
I don't know about you folks, but I've been getting a few emails, and I haven't been able to pay quite the attention to them that I would like. But today, in the middle of the afternoon, when I was getting ready to come here, I, I just kind of randomly checked some. And I got this email from a gentleman, and it really helped me a lot. And I'm, I'm going to offer it to you. I wish these were my words, but they're his. And I don't know the man. But here, here's one of the things he says. He says, if we choose to require mask, what's the worst that can happen? And he was suggesting that we ask ourselves these questions. So if we choose to require mask, what's the worst that can happen? Who bears the cost and consequences? If your bet to make mask required is the wrong one. If we choose to make mask optional, what's the worst that can happen? Who bears the cost and consequences? If your bet to make mask optional is the wrong one. And I think only we can answer those questions ourselves. But I liked them, and I just wanted to pass them along to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. I'll go ahead now, since I can't buzz in in order. But first thing I want to say is just to all the first responders who have stayed for the duration of this meeting, thank you very much. You are so appreciated, and your efforts are so respected. I also want to speak to Mr. Galbraith's comment about FSSD, K through eight. Those schools do not have the overcrowding issues that our schools have. Enrollment in FSSD is less than it was 10 years ago. There are, in a lot of cases, empty classrooms, so much more space to social distance. That is an area of the county that I proudly represent. And then finally, you know, I just, I, I want everybody to know, it, it seems that when, when you're around a group of friends, or this, this seems to be a truism, that, that you think you're the majority. But the reality is, that may or may not be true. So during, so during the, during the last week, I have tallied every email that I got and filed it in a folder, for masks or against masks. Now, I didn't count, you know, when somebody emailed me five times. I counted, you know, I tried to, I tried to make it, you know, a one, one count. I missed a few. There's a lot of people named Amy. There's a lot of people named Jennifer. So it was hard to, to make sure that I didn't double count. But there are people who are not here because it is risky for them to be here. So I feel like they need a voice in this meeting as well. So here's my tally that I spent my whole weekend working on and is updated through this afternoon at 3:00 PM. I had 781 emails requesting masking. I had 348 emails against masking. So these peo, these people are not here, and there are reasons that they're not here. And here's an email that I got today. You know, as a, as a public school system, one thing that's different, one thing we've been asked over the years is, why don't you do what private schools do? Public schools are different than private schools. Public schools educate every child. And this is our, this is an email that I got. Child is actively in chemotherapy and going, undergoing some really serious stuff. He's a regular old kid and wants to live as normally as possible. We want to give him that opportunity. We want him among his peers. We want him engaged in school. This is all part of healing, to give him as normal of a life as possible. He deserves that, and he also deserves to be taken care of. So with every story, there's another story. And I just want us to acknowledge that. Ms., Mr. Cash?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to say, I piggyback with what a lot of things everybody has said tonight. If you really want to know how many people want masks, go sit in the driver's line, the kids, the drop-off and the pickup, and just watch how many kids have masks on. That, that'll give you a true, that'll give you a real true number. And like Jay said, these kids are going to leave school and go elsewhere. Last week, Greystone opened up, Greystone Quarry, and they had three sold-out concerts. If you live in that area, you'll know, you'll know what I'm talking about. Eight thousand each, that's 24,000 people. I went to the fair Sunday night, and I couldn't tell you how many thousands of people were there. And masks are really hard to find. So this is what we're up against, putting our kids with masks on and going through all this hullabaloo. And the whole county is out there without them. May change in a week or so, may not. This may change. Hopefully it does, and hopefully these numbers don't go up. But I just appreciate everyone that attended tonight, and I appreciate your compassion and your passion for your kids, and, and coming out and standing firm for what you believe in. Both sides, it doesn't matter. But that's just all I had to say, and I, I just, other than I just can't support this the way it's written, so I'll be a no vote.
Ms. Cleveland?
I just wanted to make a comment about the mental health issues. I really, that is near and dear to my heart about the mental capacity of the children. But I had to ask myself, when I agreed to this vote, agreed to this proposal, is what's more damaging, or what I feel is more damaging than wearing a mask, is I see, saw what happened to kids, grade-school kids that were sent home, having to go online, on the computer for six hours, frustrated, their parents are frustrated, not seeing their peers, and not getting the education, and feeling their loss. And that, to me, was more mentally detrimental to the children. I, I saw how it affected them. And I saw that more than wearing a mask. And so that's why I made this decision, because I know it's very, very difficult for elementary kids to go home and be isolated like that rather than being with their peers. Thank you.
Ms. Emerson? Ms. Aprilia?
Yeah, thanks. I told a couple of parents that reached out that I would share this as a reason for why I am supporting universal masking, at least in the elementary level, as written here. And, and just to address some of the comments tonight, of course, masks are not the popular choice. I, I hate them. I mentioned that already. We all hate them. Nobody wants to wear them. So when you're standing outside in the car rider line, and it's not mandated, it's optional, it's not required, most people aren't going to choose them. But that's not how this works to protect kids that don't have the choice yet to be vaccinated. And so one parent shared that her children caught it last year. She was very careful. They wore masks in school. They were careful outside of school. They caught it at a funeral. And she said that the, the long-term effects of this have been devastating. She gave me permission to share this. Her one son has issues with playing sports, which he loves. He's still, eight months later, has heart issues when he's running bases, things like that. So we just don't know what the long-term effects are for even a healthy child if they were to catch this in school. Another father shared that he, his son, his 11-year-old, caught it in January. And now, eight months later, his, after his diagnosis, he still has problems with long hauler symptoms. It's triggered an autoimmune inflammatory response, killing brain cells that he desperately needs. This summer, instead of playing with friends, traveling, hiking, and swimming like we usually do, instead, he slept for 14 to 16 hours a night, and napped for two to four hours each day. When he played with his sister, he lay on the floor, raising a hand to play army men felt impossible to him some days. In July, we got the diagnosis. His COVID-19 infection had triggered narcolepsy. This is a life-altering permanent diagnosis. He does no longer get the stage-three sleep where you make memories, grow, and your body heals, that his body needs. His brain thinks it is always time to go to sleep, and when it does sleep, it isn't healthy sleep. He will develop cataplexy, which is uncontrollable sleep attacks that look like seizures. And the medication he needs to take will be for the rest of his life and costs over $3,000 a month. I am not willing to put any of our kids, any of our kids, at risk for this kind of thing and have that on my conscience. If this one small mitigation is something we can do to protect any child in our district that doesn't have the choice to be vaccinated yet, then we need to do it, and we need to listen to the experts. So I am obviously in support of this motion.
Mr. Galbraith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really can't believe we're, we're about to be the, just the fourth county in, in Tennessee with a, with a mask mandate. But there was something that was said about Mr. Fiscus mentioned in Look Apprentice. And while, while we do entrust our kids with, with our students during the day as part of the, as part of the school system, I still feel like this is, this is going overboard, and they're, they're now making medical decisions on behalf of our kids. And I, I really don't think that that's appropriate. I think all the people that you're, that you're hearing from, they, the thousand or so that are outside, they just, I know they said no more masks, but what they really want is a choice to do what they think is best for their kids. And we're, and I feel like we're taking that away from them, which, which I can't, I, I just fundamentally can't support. I just, I hope we, I hope, I mean, we're going to reconvene in, in September and, and talk about this. I, I still, I still don't really understand what, what has to happen between now and then for the recommendation to, to change, but look forward to, to that discussion.
Ms. Aprilia?
I just wanted to add one more thing to what Jay just said. I, I fully support a parent's right to choose when the choice only impacts their family, their child. But when my son, or actually, it was my daughter this year, came home with an email from her fam, or from her teacher that said, you can't bring nut snacks to school because there's a child with a severe nut allergy. I didn't question that. I didn't say, well, I choose to bring peanut butter and jelly for lunch every day, and so I will require that you let me do that. I'm sorry, but sometimes a choice has to be for the good of the whole. And if parents were given that choice, and as we see, only 20 to 25% took it on themselves to make the right choice for the good of the whole, then when it's other people's health at stake, by the, based on the decision of that choice, we have to, we have to put the mitigation in place. Temporarily, we'll reevaluate if the numbers start going down, absolutely. I, I don't want this to be a long-term thing. I want people who need medical exemptions to opt out because we need to make accommodations for that. But this isn't, this is a life-altering choice for other people that you, you want people to be able to make on their own, and that's not fair.
Ms. Dirk Galbraith?
Thank you, Jen. I, I real, I appreciate, you know, I appreciate your, your perspective and I completely honor that. What, I mean, the, maybe we'll get there again later. To me, I feel, I feel like everybody needs to make the choice for them, and I, and I agree. But I think the choice that can be made, if we, if we choose to do this in the future, I think every child, like, I mean, let's, let's start talking about actual, actual PPE instead of, instead of cloth mask. And if a child wants to, wants to get a protective mask, then, then that's, that's going to be their choice. So now we're, now we're talking about, I get to make my choice, you get to make your choice. You're not putting on, on me the obligation to take care of, to make you feel safe. And you know I'm not talking about you, I'm, any, anybody, right? This is not a, not a personal attack at all. But, but we're, we're putting the burden on, on our six-year-olds, and they're, they're being made fearful that they're going to sneeze and give their, give their friend COVID. And, and that's just too much of a burden. I don't want, I don't want these kids, I don't, I don't want these kids to be, to be fearful of someone else because, and they look at them as, as a place where, where germs can, can go. Like, they've always been those things. They could have always gotten the flu. They could have always gotten all kinds of communicable diseases. My dad refers to, to the, to the kids and his, and his grandkids as germ varmints because he knows whenever he gets around them, he's going to get some, some kind of communicable disease that they've probably picked up, and he's not, he's not running in the same germ family, right? It's just the nature of this stuff. So I want to get to the point where everybody's responsible for their own health, and we can, and we can equip these kids with, with actual PPE if we, if they deem, and feel the necessary to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Wimberly?
Madam Chair, I'd like to call the question.
There's no reason to call, there's no more questions.
There's no more questions.
I see no more questions, so.
It worked.
It did. It worked really quickly. Ms.? Oh, thank you, Elliot. Thank you. Okay. Everyone take a little break.
When he walks in, let's all applaud. You know, we think he went to men's room. They have left. You missed the vote, Dan, sorry.
Ms. Glenn, would you please read the motion?
The motion as amended. To require masks for students, staff, and visitors at the elementary grade levels inside all buildings and buses, effective Thursday, August the 12th, 2021, and to end on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, at 11:59. Teachers who are safely distanced at least six feet may remove their mask. We will grandfather exemptions from 2020 to 21 school year, and allow staff and students to exempt with the same set of exemptions. and allow staff and students to exempt with the same set of exemptions, religion and health.
Board members, please cast your votes. A yes indicates you support, a no indicates you don't.
Your vote is seven yes, three no.
Motion passed, as this meeting is adjourned.